Tom Nichols, Chief Academic Officer for High Schools and School Safety.
Scott Kiznos, Superintendent.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you all for coming this evening. The next part is we have an approval for the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, seconded.
Been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. For this session, item 3.01, Discussion Regarding the School Resource Officer SRO Program. And I believe just discussing the memorandum of understanding and any suggestions or any comments that we want to have. This may not be the only meeting that we end up having, but it's certainly a discussion. So Dr. Kiznos, is there anything from staff that you all have or want to report on? I just want to double check before we get started.
So, microphone.
Microphone.
Turn it on.
Oh.
The main mic.
Domain one. Oh, oh, turn on the main.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Somebody microphone. Okay. So briefly, I had a conversation with Dr. Nichols and Ms. O'Leary. And in the past, Sheriff Decatur, they MOU was written in a collaborative effort. And we have put some things together, but felt that, in fairness to the Sheriff Department, they should have a chance to look at it before introduced at a meeting. But also, we very much want to get feedback from the school board. So that MOU that we worked on is basically the MOU that you have in front of you with some comments. So, and then I think our next step would be, after the board gives us some thoughts, some direction, is to, Dr. Nichols and Mr. Martin, sit down with you and your representatives, and then work on an MOU, then bring it back to the board for action.
Okay, that, that sounds great. If you don't mind, I'm going to go to the board members first, but I also wanted to give the sheriff an opportunity. Do you have any comments too, since we have our main people here? If you have any comments, Sheriff Decatur.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to express our commitment to the schools and making sure that we do our very best with our SROs and our overall department and our commitment to the community, to make sure we're doing our best to be good partners and collaborate together. Because we want to make sure that we're doing our best to keep the school safe, a safe place that is a conducive environment for learning and safe. And I think it's very important that you know that we're with you and we're willing to work together to do our very best for our community.
And we certainly appreciate the support. So what I thought I would do is I would allow board members, if you have any specific parts of the MOU or general questions, either one, to go either way. So Ms. Young, would you like to start?
Sure.
I saw the eyeball, so I got it.
No, no, no. I was just rolling. I had something in my eye.
Oh, no.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for coming and entertaining us today and looking, reviewing the MOU. I just wanted to read this part first, because I thought it was very, very important in the MOU, where it says "All responses," right on the preamble? Premable? Preamble? Yeah, okay. "All responses to school misconduct should be reasonable, consistent, and fair, with appropriate consideration of mitigation factors and of the nature and severity of the incident. Students should receive appropriate redirection and support from in-school and community resources prior to the consideration of suspension, expulsion, involvement with the law enforcement, or referral to the court." And that was very timely. I was happy to see that there. And I went through the MOU. So I do have some comments. I have some inquiry. So I don't know if you want me to do just one, or just...
Two at a time?
Two? Okay. Sure. So the one most important one, and I'm probably, you probably know the answer to this already, but we had a conversation in the past, and I know Ms... Yikes. Hollaback will remember that we discussed, you know, consent from a parent if the child is under 18. And I wanted to ensure that that was in, in the MOU. Two, if the child was special needs and under 21, I wanted that to be in there. Because one of the important things that I found talking to community leaders and to parents is that if their child is autistic, or if their child is not well mental, that, and they're 20 or 21, they appear to be man, strong, and not following orders if they're stopped. So I just wanted to make sure that perhaps in the system somewhere, that if the SROs know that some of these kids that are 18, or 19, or 20, that they put a note somewhere in the system that says this child is, you know, autistic, or whatever, so that when they encounter them, because they go to work. They're, they're working in our community. They're part of our community, that if you run into them, that you would know, okay, yeah, this is Albert. Albert is autistic, you know, he probably needs to go to, whatever the name is, over at Mary Washington. So that is something else that I was looking at. That's two. I have more, but, so.
Ms. Healy, I saw...
Madam Chairman, I have a question. Are we addressing the MOU? Or I'm not sure if Ms. Young is talking about issues outside the MOU, because that's what I thought the purpose of this session was.
This part of the MOU. Like, I would like that in the MOU, that if a child is under 18.
No, the, the part about if someone stopped outside. I, I didn't, didn't know we were going to be discussing things outside of the school environment.
It was just an example, Ms. Healy.
It's, it's why...
It was an example why it would be needed in the MOU to say if a child is under 18, or if a child is under 21, parent consent, but also if they could put something in the system, if they're dealing with the child, if, if something could be in the system or in the MOU that says that there is a connection with, you know, a child being under 18 or under 21, that if the child is special needs, that we could put some kind of note somewhere. So I don't know, we could add that in the MOU.
I'm, I'm just trying to see what the focus of this discussion is here, because I, I think we've asked the, the law enforcement officials to come to discuss the MOU. I'm not prepared to discuss anything outside here, because actually, I don't think it's within my purview. I mean, as a school board member, you know, I'm responsible for issues in the school, not, you know, outside in the community. So I, I just, I don't know what message we're going to be sending here.
I think what I would summarize, and Ms. Young say if I'm wrong, is sort of developing with, between the schools and looking at issues with, once the age of 18 is met, or 21, because we do have older students in our, in our schools, of are there special things we should be examining in our... That's how I would kind of summarize that. I don't know the answers to that, but if we're kind of posing questions, the 18 to 21, since we do have those older students, is there something special, even if it's not always in the MOU, but in our approach, that we want to be united? But if I have misstated that, that was...
Yeah, good. And if there's not, then, then there's not. But these are my comments, my observations, or changes that I think...
Interpretation? The MOU here and these other comments are, you know, on the side, so to speak. Comments about if someone stopped out in the public, or...
Okay, so you, you mentioned it. So, okay, okay, we're good.
Okay.
Ms. Hollaback, and then I'll switch over to the side.
Okay. Chris isn't here, is he? No. Sheriff Decatur, maybe you can answer this for me. The, we, we had this conversation once before about funding, and there's some discussion down in Richmond about cutting funding overall. When you guys are basically implementing our SRO program here, is that fully funded by the county, or does the state give a contribution to that as well?
So all the positions for the schools in, in our juvenile services unit, or for in a sheriff's office, are funded through the sheriff's office. We have received grants before for positions, but that, the last time we received a grant in which it's over was back when Newtown, Connecticut happened several years ago, when we received state funding for about a half a dozen grants at that time. But that's over, so all of it comes through out of our budget.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is I thought maybe if there was some, you know, connection between the state and the SRO program that we have here, that if they had any power at all to say, okay, we're going to cut funds, that we have a plan B that we can put in here. Like, if the state cuts our funding for the SRO program, what's our plan B to keep you guys up and running in the school system? And if, as long as I don't have to worry about that, then I won't have to address it in here.
Yeah, and again, if it, if it allays any concerns, we're fully committed to, to serve in our schools and to continue.
There's no question in my mind about that. I'm more concerned about what Richmond has in mind for, for our SRO program across the state.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So thanks.
All right. Anyone else with some question? Dr. Chase, why don't you start us, and then Dr. Warner?
So just reading about the interrogation, investigation of students, and the investigation and questioning, I think it's on page seven. And it talks about how the student will be informed generally of the purpose of the investigation, warned against self-incrimination and development in the appropriate manner, and given an opportunity to present informally his or her knowledge of the facts. So just out of curiosity, do we record these so that there's a record that the student was actually informed of their rights and given the opportunity to not incriminate themselves?
So any, anytime we're conducting an investigation where it requires someone's rights to be read, which would be that you're, you're being detained and questioned, those are the two factors involved, where it requires Miranda to be read, we, we keep a record of that in the report that, that we, we record as we do the investigation. And then there's also mandates that we follow. Of course, there's updated laws that were just passed where it requires, before we question juveniles, we have to, to contact the parents or guardian prior to that. Unless, and there are exceptions, like if, if someone's life, limb, or property is, if, under an extreme situation where there's exigent circumstances, then, you know, then that's an exception to that. But we have to reach out, contact the guardian or parent.
Yeah, I saw that at the start of it said that, that all, that, that in a, I can't remember the exact wording, but that every effort would be made to contact the guardian, and if possible, to have the guardian there. But I was just wondering whether there is a, a audio record or a video record of this, so that, that there can't be any question that the child was, was given their rights, and of course, Miranda rights, are they read in a way that the child understands? And, and hopefully you guys are doing that, but I'm just asking the question, because I, I don't know, so.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Can I touch on that? It's just kind of a follow-up question to that real quick. So I guess my question is if there's a student who's 18 years old and is being questioned by the principal, trying to get to the bottom of what's happening. And the student is, has been kind of taught, you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And an SRO is sitting in the office and listening to this confession, and is, is documenting everything that this 18-year-old is saying, and hasn't been read as Miranda writes. And that testimony that he just gave in front of the SRO now becomes part of, of his record, even though he's not been arrested yet. And then finally, when he is arrested, it's, it's included in, into the, into the jacket, as they say, for his arrest. So technically, based on what you just said, if the parent wasn't notified, and the, the student wasn't read as Miranda writes, and whatever he used, whatever he said, was used against him in court, how, how does that happen? And is that legal? And is there a way that we can address that? So if it's not legal, that it doesn't happen again?
So if a child is in custody under law, under law enforcement, we're required, if they're being interviewed or questioned about a crime, and they're in custody, we're required to read the Miranda with the, the school administrator. It's almost, for, for them to question a child, it's almost considered like reasonable suspicion, where for us, it's a higher, higher level. So what, that, when the kid's being interviewed by the principal, that information's not what we use for prosecution. I mean, if, if we're going to use any information that's been given by the child, if he's in custody of the police, and then we're required to read Miranda. If he's in custody and being questioned. Now, if he's not, you know, we can ask questions, but before we do that, we're required to, to reach out to a parent. And then there's exceptions, as I mentioned earlier, that allows us, but there, there are few. I mean, we have to have a guardian. And then there, and then the child is allowed to, to have, to be on the phone, or whatever. There's a different, different ways that they can, that we're allowed to reach out. It could be through telephone, or through a video, or in person. And then that child is, by law, is allowed to talk with his parent before any questioning.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
If that, hopefully I didn't confuse you too much.
So I had a, another question, which is just...
Real quick.
Ms. Young, I wanted to go back to your question, because I don't think we really fully answered it. Yes.
When they're outside of the school system, like it's after 2:30, does this MOU still stand that they're students? So if they're away from the school, is this only when they're in school, or is it outside school, they're always a student from SCPS? How does that work?
No. So when we're dealing with students on school property at school functions, the MOU applies. We're, say we come into contact with them at home, the MOU would not apply if it's not dealing with the school system or a school event or activity.
Okay. So that answers my question right there.
But a lot of the stuff that's in the MOU, it, it's how we conduct business anyway with juveniles, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Those are the questions that I've, you know, were raised to me, based on, you know, how some were treated versus others. And so I just wanted to make sure that if it's the MOU, it's standard across the board. But if it's just in school, during school time, or school functions, then that, that's a different...
It's the same standard. It's just specific to the schools.
Okay.
And how we interact, and whether the parents aren't available at the time, it's usually school staff that steps in until we can make contact with the parents. So there's little nuances there.
Yeah.
But when we're dealing with the juvenile.
Yeah.
We still use the same approach.
Yeah.
And I know you spoke a little bit about special needs and the ages.
Yeah, because there are some kids that are older in the school system that you all have worked with and know that they're difficult and, you know, need restraining, and you end up seeing them on, you know, outside. And I was just wondering, I know in the school, sometimes, you know, you do intake, or whatever it is that you do, you know these kids, but then outside, they don't. So I was trying to see if they're, it, it, you know, this MOU continues on, but you're telling me that it kind of, sort of...
And one of the things that's, that's really important is with the SRO program is building relationships.
Yeah.
And so we expect that the SROs are going to know the students that may have special needs, who, or who react in a certain way. And so they adjust their approach when dealing with, you know, those students. And so, you know, regardless of whether they're below 18, or they're 20, those are things that, as they build a relationship throughout the years, they're able to influence and then have...
But the SROs are only in the school. So when you get...
I'm sorry.
The SROs are only in the school, so when they're outside, you know, the regular police officers are not going to know these kids. So that's, that's, I was trying to figure out how that works, if there was a connection.
And one of the things that happens, I'm, I'm not sure if you're aware of this. So say there's a call for a student that has said they're going to shoot up the school or something of that nature. When patrol deals with those types of calls, they contact the SRO from the school that the student attends, so they can get a little bit of the history.
Perfect.
And there, so there is communication.
Perfect. That's exactly what I was asking about. And so hopefully that's clear. And yeah, thank you so much. I'm sorry.
Dr. Chase, continue.
So just looking at the, at the MOU, I don't see, and, and maybe I missed it, anything about, like, an annual review of, of how many interactions there are. Two sentences? Okay. Okay. So, so just, you know, for example, we have an MOU related to the day school, and there's supposed to be, and sometimes it gets missed, but there's supposed to be an annual report, kind of, you know, how is it going, what, you know. So, so do you all at the sheriff's office have some data collection that you're doing with respect to, to what's going on in the schools, or do we on the school side do some data collection? Just to, you know, you'd like, if everything's going great, to be able to check that box and say things are going great. And, and if something's being missed, to know that we need to put some extra attention in one location or another, or to know that this particular school has more cases than another school, what's, what's driving that, that kind of thing?
So we do collect that data, and we have put together some reports in the past just showing the, the high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools, and the different, different types of reported incidents that we have. And, and you, you see the trend, of course, as you move up into high school, there's more, more reports being, being written, and we track that. But for anything specific that you would like, that maybe we can come together and, you know, figure out what it, what type of report would you like, that would be helpful. And we can tailor it to that. But we do, you know, collect that information. And, and we were able to show through our last report that we did, which was put into a book, where some high schools have more activity than others. And, and then that helps you kind of try to figure out what can we do to, to, to work through that. But yeah, if there's, if there's certain information that you, that you want, we can certainly work together to put that, to put that together. And then on the memorandum, you know, it's the law now, I think it says, it used to be every five years, but now the law says every two years, you'll, you know, revise and go through the memorandum of understanding. But in ours, I think we have, we do it annually, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think just, I know we, as a board, have been talking about restructuring our committees, to have a committee that's doing some kind of, you know, and so it might be that committee, or it might be Greg Martin's office, or something. Just, I know for me as a board member, I'd like to know if, if one of my schools had a particular issue, and, and I know they're all our schools, but one of the schools in my district, just to have a sense of that. And I don't anticipate that there's, there's any issue, but, you know, trust, trust and verify. So I would just like to, to, to know that for sure, that so that if I'm sitting down with constituents, I can say, you know, yes, I am aware of this, or no, there isn't a problem, or, or whatever it is.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And also, that kind of leads to the change too with the law, where what's required by a school administrator to, to report. I think it went from misdemeanor to felony, isn't it correct? And so it really is based on, really, it really starts with good communication and trust, and making sure we're working together. Because also, if, if the school administrator doesn't report the things that are mandated, that can lead to his or her, him or her getting into, you know, a bit of an issue if they don't report it. So I know that open communications is important. And then again, capturing the information you all would like, because you're going to figure out kind of what metric, and what are you measuring, and what do you want to look at. And we can help you through that and gather, collect that information.
Dr. Warner, I think you were next.
Well, to follow up on what Dr. Chase said, I was looking at the evaluation of school law enforcement partnership, and it's a pretty, pretty small section. Progress towards achieving the objective shall be jointly reviewed at least annually by Stafford County Public Schools and the Stafford County Sheriff's Office. I was wondering, do you report everything? That all the interactions between the SRO and students are just specific incidents? And how is that, is it, you know, how, how can we audit those records and, and make sure that we know what's going on, not only in our schools, but if there's problems that come up between the way a situation's handled, that, that we may want to look at and decide a better alternative for some, some, some behavioral problems?
Well, we do, I didn't know you needed an answer. Trying to figure out here. So we do capture information that requires a report to be written, and also violations of laws that may not require, it may not be a, a report, but it may be some other type of issue. But as far as like the code of conduct and those kind of things, as you know, and, and it's been this way for such a long time, we don't enforce any of the rules and the codes and those kind of things. But, so we wouldn't capture those types of things.
I guess I'm, I'm asking what type of incidents would be reported on? I'm sure like normal interactions probably, you know, would just be, you know, they wouldn't be. But what type of incidents would you, you, the SRO prepare a report on, and what type of information is captured?
Well, like for an example, it, it could be anything from a larceny, you know, from an iPhone. We have a lot of violations of vaping in school. There's, I, I know that's subjective, well, it is a lot, but we, numerous types of incidents with vaping. So that may be, that would be a report, or a larceny, iPhones being stolen, shoes being stolen, that kind of thing. Or it could be a possession. And then there's a list of different crimes that are committed, that are felony. And actually, we are revising our MOU now to include the new law changes in there. So, so it's current. And in that, it will give you an example of the different types of violations, whether it's, you know, larcenies, or, you know, assault and batteries that are, that rise to that level, and those type, those type of calls. And then from time to time, sexual assault, you know, too, occurs. So we, we capture that information, and that, that would be things that we could, we could provide, you know, information to you. Of course, we have to be careful about, you know, we wouldn't include names and that kind of thing, because we have to protect the, the victims and the juveniles who are involved.
And I think one of the things that's important with that is, one of the things that we've found with our SRO program is, we allow the SROs to have a lot of discretion. And so while they may be documenting it, sometimes they will step back and say, we're going to, it was a crime, but we're going to allow the school staff to handle it, but we're going to document it. And then that way, if there's progression in, as far as, you know, bad behavior, criminal behavior, we can then show we've, you know, this time we counseled, this time we let the school handle it, this time we're charging. So that's important as well. So.
Thank you.
Ms. Randall, did...
I was curious. I saw in here that you all have specific training. How often are these trainings updated? And the second part of that was evaluations for the officers that are in these positions. Who conducts those, and how often?
So for every SRO, they're sent to an academy or a training for school resource officers. And then every summer, DCJS puts on a training that is updated based off of what the climate is, and what SROs across the state are dealing with in schools. As far as evaluations, it's a tiered system. So the SROs are evaluated by their sergeants, their sergeants are evaluated by their first sergeant. And then my position, I evaluate the first sergeant, and I'm looking at the program and how it's, it's operating. We also take into account feedback... We also take into account feedback from school staff and, and principals mainly as to how the SRO is conducting themselves within the building.
Ms. Young, I know you had a few more, we're going to extend just a small amount because I do want to make sure that we go, so go ahead.
Okay, so.
Turn on your microphone.
See if anybody, oh, I'm sorry. To see if anybody asked the question.
After Ms. Young speaks, ma'am.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh.
Go ahead, no, go ahead. Please, please.
Come on, somebody got time.
I have a question about the, the section that Dr. Chase referenced on page seven, investigation and questioning. There's a couple places where it refers to.
Refers to interrogation. I'm not sure that's the proper word, or if it is, we need to define it because it goes back and forth, it uses questioning a lot more than interrogation and it talks about interviewing. And the title is investigation and questioning. So I don't know if that's intentional because I, you know, didn't draft this document, but if we're, if we are in the process of revising, I would either define the difference between an interrogation and an interview, or just refer to questioning in the place of interrogation. Because the, the, the whole tone I get from here and, and what I see, you know, from the SROs, this is not an, an adversarial situation where there's, you know, an interrogation. It's, it's more of a, an effort to intervene. So it's just, I, I would look at that when we, when we revise this. And I think I counted, what, one, two, three? Three places where it, it says interrogation and many more where it talks about questioning. So, thank you, thank you, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Ms. Healy, sorry. Ms. Young.
Okay, thank you so much. One of the things that I, I was looking at is when I requested the roles and responsibilities, like I wanted to know what was on it. And I, I don't know if I'm supposed to say it online, but this is the eighty-six eleven and I almost fell out of my chair because I'm like, it had dragging in there, dragging hundred pounds and I'm like, oh my lord. But then when I read the MOU, the responsibilities, roles and responsibilities of partner organizations. And so if, if this MOU is for the school, should we just label it that it says, you know, SCPS or whatever? Because I was under the impression that this deputy sheriff field operations is actually their job description that they go by. And the SRO job description is actually what's in this document here. And so I think they need to match. You follow what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am, and maybe I can help clarify that. So all of our SRO, most of our SROs come, they, they start out, many of them start out in the field operations. So you have a standard job description for field operations, a deputy who works in the field on patrol. And then you have, we have deputies that work as investigators and there's a job description for them. And then we have a job description for courts. And so we, we don't have one that is, that outlines the job description for an SRO because they fall under field operations. But that's something that, that we can easily create and craft, which isn't an issue for us to have.
Yeah, and then this, what I was thinking, when I was thinking about it, this is just not one side, this is just all of us together. Because I realized that the sheriff's office know what their job duties are. And I think that we, the school system, need to do a better job of ensuring that the sheriffs, the SROs do what they're supposed to do. I mean, you know, they, they, they add some, some different things on. And in talking to some individuals, the administrators and the principals, they set the tone. And if they set the tone on how they want students to, you know, to behave and then they put sheriffs in a position to handle some kids and they know it's not their responsibility. I don't know where you, you, you know, you, you get that barrier, like where do you stop? Where do you say, okay, you know what, this is not my job? But I think that there needs to be some sign of going back to the training, there needs to be a collective idea, like what is the responsibility of the SRO? And that the SRO does, is not put in a position where they, they're doing things that they know that it's outside of their preview. And so I don't know if there's something that we need to do that the kids are like, work with, like maybe have a, a, a principal that really, you know, has been around for a while and knows what the rules are and that you all could work with. But at the same time, you need to have, say, for example, the SRO that's in charge, you know, having tactical experience is one thing, but having a background as an SRO works better because then you know the community, the expectations from the community, the, you know, what is expected in the school system and that you can manage it a little bit better instead of managing from afar. And so there's a collaboration I'm talking about with, with a principal, some training, some standardization across the board, rather than every school is doing one thing here and there. And then I have a question, I'll let you all go about the SPO.
As far as our SRO program and doing that, at the beginning of every school year, we do have a meeting with the staff and we go over the principals, I should make sure I clarify, I mean, we go over what the expectations are, reporting, communication. I've given almost every principal in the county my number, if they have an issue, they can call. Sometimes, especially on our side with the culture and the training and expectations, they, our SROs know what they can handle and what they can't. And so there have been times in the past where they've been asked to get involved in a situation and they've told them that they can't. And so then I'll get a call, they're not doing their job. No, they're doing what they're supposed to because we don't handle code of conduct issues that aren't criminal. So we do have that occurring already.
So another thing for clarification that might be helpful too, of course, for our job description, that, that's one of those HR requirements to Fair Labor Standards Act and you have to have a job description and, and the person when they're applying for a job, then of course, you know, the skills, the knowledge and abilities and all those things that are incorporated into that. And that's where an SRO falls into that category before they can be hired as a deputy. But then we have a policy in our department and then also our MOU. And then, of course, the training that they go through, they go through almost a week-long training that Lieutenant Diggs had, had talked about. And then each year they go through annual training just for SRO, which is a conference. And then we have mandated training. Of course, our department, we go above and beyond the training requirements that are mandated by the state of Virginia, but there's in-service training that requires cultural diversity training, that's a reoccurring type of training, and then implicit bias-based training that we also do as well. So there's a lot of training that we do, but I understand what you're talking about. You would like to see a job description that kind of lays out the duties of an SRO that are kind of clear.
So it's not even about the job description? And maybe I'm not being clear, it's a.
I, I don't want to stop our discussion. Unfortunately, we have a consultant waiting for us to go into closed session.
I think that's.
Real quickly, it's not actually even a question, just two points, one thing, just to follow up, part of this conversation, some of the training has to be on our side. The bulls are using the.
That's my point.
Learning from you guys, what's working, work. Thank you. Certain communities in Virginia where the police department, the sheriff department has been a great partner with the school system, getting mentors for what we often would call at-risk children. So I really look forward to that conversation.
Yeah, and then the only other thing before Ms. Hazard cut me off, is that the audit, right? It said that school safety audits due, but not yet received, I'm not sure we received them yet. And then when you are evaluating your SROs, I think perhaps there needs to be like a three sixty in there since Mr. Martin is in charge of security and we know how the SROs are behaving. That way you could get some feedback on how they're doing in the school system and, you know, this is how it helps you evaluate them a little bit better.
Yeah, we did that for our school protection officers too, getting the feedback from school administrators as well.
Yeah. And I didn't know, you know, if you have time, you could tell me about the SPO program, how that is going, because that was supposed to be a pilot and I know COVID came and I wasn't sure if now it's extended or stopped or what we're doing with that, so.
It's still good.
Two thumbs up.
Yeah.
Because it was paid for by the Board of Supervisors. So I think what I want to say is we are looking forward to a continued partnership. We want to, all of us care about our students, our kids, our staff, for their safety and their well-being. And I think these dialogues are meant to enhance where we already are and find out ways we can partner more together, share resources and get the job done. So at this point, because we do need to go into closed session, Ms. Hollerbeck, if you will read us in, thank you all so much.
I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one A nineteen of the Code of Virginia to receive from, to receive from and discuss with the consultant that recently completed school safety audit, which addresses the security of school division property and/or the safety of persons using such property.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing them, we are in closed session. Hearing then, we are in closed session.
Whereas the School Board of Stafford County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Stafford County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a second? All right, at this point we will call the board. Ms. Hall, can we hear you?
Yes, we have Dr. Chase.
Aye.
Ms. Hazard.
Agree.
Ms. H- Ms. Healy.
Agree.
Ms. Hollerback?
Agreed.
Ms. Randall?
Agreed.
Dr. Warner?
Agreed.
And Ms. Young?
Yes.
Madam Chair, motion passes.
All right, motion passes. Was there any motions or items coming out of closed session? All right, hearing none, that will be for future consideration. At that point, I will close our work session portion of the meeting. Since we are running a few minutes late, I would like to apologize to those who are here, we did have a closed session on a matter that was contained in there about security that has been stated in the motion, ran a little late, but please know it is for a good purpose, but again, we apologize, we do like to usually run on time. So with that, we are going to reopen our meeting this evening, new agenda, excuse me. All right, so I'm going to call the order, our Tuesday, September 22 regular meeting of the School Board, I would like each member again to just introduce themselves and the district they are coming from, Ms. Healy, can you get us started from this end?
Patricia Healy, Rock Hill District. Susan Randall, George Washington District.
Irene Hollerback, Acquahia District.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood District.
Emma Young, the Garrettville District.
Elizabeth Warner, Riverside Water District.
Sarah Chase, Falmouth District.
All board members are in attendance this evening, so our next item on the agenda is the approval of our agenda.
Motion to approve with a, an addition. The addition would be 11.04, further discussion on return to school/pilot.
Second. All right, is there any discussion? Is there a discussion that that would rather be 11.01 versus 11.04 for information items due to the matter being discussed?
I'm fine with that.
I'm just asking the board. I would suggest it 11.01 versus 11.04.
I'm fine with that.
Works for me.
Motion maker and.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor of the agenda as presented, except adding a item 11, or a revised 11.01, moving the other items down to discuss the, how did you say it?
Further discussion on return to school.
Return to school.
Pilot.
Sorry. Return to school plans. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, we're going to start off with awards and recognition, which, with a recognition of our custodial staff, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Kizner to get us started.
Yeah, so Anderson will do this, but it's been really very rewarding to see in the last month or so. Our custodial staff really stepping up in many ways. I'll just say go. What I expected they would do. And it's a group of people that are working behind the scenes to make sure buildings are not only clean, remarkably safe. So Anderson's going to do a little recognition.
Welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Madam Chair, I would like to ask you first, Dr. Kizner, first of all, would custodial employees take? The board will recognize our custodial employees for the essential services that they are providing for our school communities, along with normal duties that include cleaning and caring for the building, there are additional tasks that are now necessary because of the ongoing pandemic. These tasks include disinfecting surfaces and also providing electrostatic cleaning regularly as needed to help make our buildings safer to occupy. And I'll have some very special stars from our custodial team here tonight, and want to recognize them individually representing the entire group, but I have Jesse Lee Polinski, who's the manager of custodial services, Sandra Charles with Hartwood Elementary School, Vince Gray with Margaret Brent Elementary School, Dawn Hacker, Ferry Farm Elementary School, Janom Cockfay with HH Pool Middle School, and then also with the custodial team from ABM Services, Dorian Harris is the district manager, Reginald Harris is the regional manager, Melvin Wright is with Drew Middle School, Monica Reyes with Stafford Middle School, Maria Piadrata, I'm sorry, Maria Piadrejita, and Julio Piadrejita are here, and Maria's with Colonial Forge, and then Julio's with Brookpoint High School. And I just want to say that our team understands that they have higher expectations right now because of the pandemic, there's, there's higher expectations from the community and the students and the staff and everybody in the schools that, that they do more, and the disinfecting is a really big part of it, and these folks are ready for it, and they're, they're working hard, they're going to do what's needed, and they know that people are going to have concerns throughout the year, but they're going to do the best they can, and we really appreciate what you do, thank you for being here tonight to represent, and thanks for helping to keep our schools safe. So, and we know some of y'all have to get up early in the morning, so you're welcome today for the meeting or not, but thank you again.
Thank you.
A huge part of our Stafford County Public Schools team, thank you all again for all that you do, and I know as stated, many of you will be up early, so again, thank you for all that you do. Next, we're going to turn to our staff reports with our COVID-19 update. Dr. Kizner, I will turn that over to you, and we'll reserve the return to school presentation, if you don't mind during the 11.01, I think that would be easier for a back and forth dialogue, does that make sense, or, it's up to you.
Well, I mean, it's up to you guys actually, but, oh, yeah. It's, it's really whatever your pleasure is, we had it designed to go now, and Ms. Healy, Ms. Neely was going to follow, that's how it's set up, so.
Why don't you go ahead, I would ask then the board if we are going to hear it more as a presentation, and then for our discussion to be in 11.01.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure we had an idea going forward, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, so, okay, so, tonight, my objective is to provide you information, and the information is designed around a motion that was made on, okay, on, oh, sorry. By the time we get to it, it'll be number 11. Okay, I got, so just to remind the School Board, the motion that I was asked to bring the discussion tonight, the motion, and this is word for word, health and academic data analysis will occur on September 21, I think we really meant September 22, to determine if an elementary hybrid model slash 100% remote option, including the consideration of a pilot program, should begin on October 6. So that was the motion, that was the third of three motions. So, what we set out to do, as all of you know by now, we discussed this actually at the last School Board meeting, initially, we were, and there's different ways one could define pilot, the way we define pilot, I define pilot, was to give us as much information possible to replicate what we would see when the hybrid model goes into place, and if you recall, at the board meeting, I kind of presented this notion of a K1, some board members were asking for K3, meeting with staff, we looked at a K2 model, which although I'm not recommending K2, or we're not recommending K2, I have to say though, going through the process of deciding that K2 would not be a good model, has been remarkably valuable as we move forward, there's a lot of work that took place the last couple of weeks to come to that conclusion, which I will save that for Ms. Neely, who will present why that came to a bout. So, what is recommended as it relates to, so there's two parts, how I read the motion, okay, there was two parts, the pilot recommendation, and a recommendation on the hybrid, okay? So, the recommendation as it relates to the hybrid, I mean to the pilot, is that we pilot a K hybrid model at selected schools, and again, I'm going to ask Ms. Neely to get into the more details, with a continuation of the 100% remote option to start on October 6, okay, so parents would still have the option, and we would have it at certain schools, and she will let you know which schools. The recommendation as it relates to the hybrid model, and I know there's been this date of November 10 talked about, and I have talked about it, but there is nothing in any of the minutes or motions that talk about November 10. I think what might have contributed to the November 10 date, because in essence, at the end of the first quarter, and at one time when we were looking at earlier plans, that was a discussion for the middle and high school kids to return on November 10. So I just mentioned that, so you should not wonder if we're making the November 10, because that was never a date set, okay, I just want to bring that out. But what we are recommending, and again, I know it's going to sound a little broken record until Ms. Neely gets here, that she will go into the more details, but we are recommending, again, recommending, again, a K5 hybrid model with a continuation of the 100% remote option to start on October 26th at every elementary school, okay? So this one would be division-wide. Now, I think we have demonstrated, you have demonstrated as a board, and I believe I've demonstrated as a superintendent, that health data will help us drive our decisions, and if necessary, change our decisions, okay? But I also believe you have to have a date in mind. You have to have a target, because I think you will respect, hopefully by me saying it, but I know you will definitely respect it after Ms. Neely says it, that it takes a lot of work to, to transition from where we are today to getting children back in our school. It just doesn't happen overnight. It does take weeks, I would say at minimum, three weeks, because not only you have to give parents the option, not the option, but the opportunity to change their schedules, you have, obviously, you have to staff it, you have to provide the transportation, all that routing, and you have to make sure food service. There's a lot of work that goes into place before a returning that many children to school, okay? So I just want to mention that part. The other thing, health metrics, and so last Friday, and I do want to thank Dr. Chase for joining us, but last Friday, we, so weekly, we meet with the health department, representative of the health department. And early that day, to my surprise, I believe, and I think everybody's surprised, even the health department, I think, the way they were talking, the Center for Disease Control presented a new model. And this model does not specifically talk about a certain community or school system, but you could take your data and apply it to this model. And the health department truthfully did that for us, because they knew that this model was not only new to us, but in many ways, it was new to them. And there are three parts to the CDC guidance, and what I would say, that this guidance is more specific to a school setting than a community setting, okay? And the three areas, and I'm going to show you data from the Virginia Department of Health, which you actually saw yesterday, I sent it to you yesterday, you saw it last week, and you saw it two weeks ago. Every Monday, it used to be on Thursdays, but every Monday, the Rappahannock Area Health Department sends us our local data. But anyway, so you may wonder out loud, or you may, you know, wonder, and just keep it to yourself, is that why does the data look different from two different organizations? And the only thing I could share with you is they calculate some of it differently, okay? So, the first indicator, which is similar in many ways to an indicator that you've seen at the last school board meeting and also saw yesterday, was the number of new cases per 100,000 person within the last 14 days. And you see, again, it ranges from lowest to highest, and for Stafford, we fall in the second highest area, okay? We fall in the highest level of transmission in school, higher level transmission, higher, not highest, higher, okay? In the percentage of people testing positive after they have a COVID-19 test, and this one has much greater alignment with the CDC report, we fall in the moderate level of transmission school, or one might say the yellow color. And then there's a third area, the ability of a school to implement the five key mitigation strategies. And again, we fall in the green area. It's either, you know, the lowest or the lower, okay? So, you see the CDC guidance. And now what I'm going to do is hopefully get this thing to turn. Okay. Oh, well. So is, hey, Mike? Is there another way that I don't have to use this?
You can tell me, you can say next if you want.
Okay, that's even better.
There you go.
So, another piece of data, this is the week of September 10th to the week of September 15th. Again, you could, if you're looking at, get some comparisons where we were that week compared to some of our neighboring school systems that are all part of the Rappahannock Area Health Department, you get a sense of the trend, at least for a five-day period for Stafford. Next, Mike. So, this is what you saw yesterday. I just took two out of the four areas. The two of these areas have more relevancy, more relevant for a school system. So what you see is, and I know last time I told you it was orange colors, and it was, and then the health department changed it to blue colors, but the definitions are the same, okay? But what is the case incidence rate per 100,000? And you see that we are at 7.8. Anything above 10, as I told you, is high burden, anything under 5 is low burden. And I also shared with you that they look at 14 days trend, and we're at a fluctuating trend. And then the percent tested positive with the COVID tests, you see that we're at 6.8. I shared with you, and it remains the same. Here, there's only two indicators, either high or low, and we're at low. And this one, we have seen in Stafford, this is specific to Stafford, is 14 days of decreasing, okay? And this was yesterday's data, so that we wanted to wait till we had the latest data. Mike, what's that?
I said I went and looked today, and that first one said we've been increasing for 13 days.
Yeah, so I said I looked at this VDH guidance data before I came here tonight, and I'm a little confused because that first bar cases, where it says cases have been declining for two days, it said they've been increasing for 13 days. So I don't know, I mean, I'm just kind of perplexed by what.
This is what the health department reads for Stafford. Okay, next one, please. And it'll come out again next Monday. So, we wanted, or I wanted to show you a trend, okay? And we selected August 5th, because that's basically when our staff was returning. And you could see that one could, may conclude that we made a good decision in August not to return our children. August was, had some of our highest weeks, okay? And you could see that the week of August 13th and 20th, I believe August 10th would have been the week that the kids would have returned, that was actually a high burden week. And again, I know you could read the numbers on your own, and then you see the percent positively. So, you see another trend, which I think if, if we're hoping to make good decisions based on data, I think that one holds true. Next one, please. So again, I don't necessarily need to read this to you, it's just a comparison, just so you know, our meeting was around 3 o'clock on September 18th, and then yesterday, when I received the other data, you receive it. So it's very recent data, and we will get the new data on the 28th, the new metric bar. Next, please. So, it's been asked, we think it's a great idea, to give you a idea of both staff and student, and we're giving it to you in different ways, and I'll try to walk you through it. If you take the week of August 3rd, we had four staff members that tested positive. The zero represents, based on contact tracing and conversations, that no one got positive because of being at school, okay? And what you could see is, we also had three staff quarantine. You also need to know, I can't exactly give you the number, but it would not be unusual for a staff member that was initially quarantined to get tested and also end up in the column of staff positive, okay? So if you take a look at the week of August 24th, you saw that four staff members were tested positive, two we could trace, two events stemming from being at school, okay? And that gives you an idea. So you could see, and this is what we'll present on our website, so the public could, you know, understand what our local, our school-based numbers are. I will say, if you, I was mentioning to some of you, there's an interesting article on the, I don't know if it's still up there, but on the New York Times website, about the difficulties for the public to track COVID cases, because pretty much, almost every state does it differently, and then schools within their own state do it differently, as you might have noticed in an article, I think, in yesterday or today's VSVA briefing. So, we're going to be as transparent as we can, but there you have, next one, Mike. The following one represents the students. Again, this one, we're only able at this point to show you the number of students positive and how many students had to be quarantined, and again, you have the averages, the week average. Next one, Mike, please. So, a question, and we had, this was a part of our conversation on Friday with the health department, what are factors to consider to either close a classroom or school closing? And I mentioned to the health department that I saw two examples from two different school systems that were completely different in their approach, not saying either one was wrong, but I was just curious if there was a formula we could use. And I, I think their response was that you have to look at every situation individually, and they really can't say, and I'll walk you through some examples. So, we constantly collaborate with the Rappahannock Area Health Department, but if we had a teacher with a certain credential, they're working with children with disabilities, and they have the only license to work with that group of children or child, and that teacher tests positive, we would, in essence, have to close that program down because there would be the only teacher there, close that classroom. We may be in another situation where we would have maybe one or two teachers and one or two paraprofessionals, and if an adult tested positive, we would not necessarily have to close that classroom down if determination of the contact tracing and so on did not require it, okay? And then the extent of positive COVID-19 confirmed cases, extent of potential COVID-19 transmission, the outbreak data, which I think Colette went over with you. And then, we did recognize them, but, you know, the extent and quickness of thorough disinfection and sanitization procedures at the classroom or building levels. So that's a fact that we would have to consider. We would not want children or staff back if we could not, and this is for the buses too, taking buses offline, if we could not assure that we've taken the steps necessary to, to make them clean. So I think, Mike, I think, I think I end here. Oh, attendance, I do not end here. Aren't you lucky, okay? But the next one, I just want to give you an idea of our attendance, strictly focusing on elementary. So it's just so, you know, we took a snapshot of a Tuesday, and this is pretty, this is pretty good. This is, you know, we have to take attendance for the purposes, well, we always need to take attendance, but obviously, we have to take attendance as it relates for funding. But you'll see that we're having, you know, in a high 90, 98, 90%, 9% of our children on those days, and looking at the other days, it's all pretty much the same number. Next, please.
Is this a virtual number? Virtual?
This is both.
Both?
This is children, yeah, both. Okay. Next one, Mike, please. So this, next one, thank you. Just, just so you know, we also want to track and to show those diffs are weekends, okay? So, you know, that's why it looks like a camel or something, but, but you see that we're seeing some good engagement by defining being on Google Meet daily use. Next one. And then again, you'll see as time went on, again, the big dip is weekend, so don't, don't bother you, you'll see that as people getting more used to Canvas, we're seeing more Canvas. And this is data that we could track by people logging on. Next one, Mike. So, we're only, I have to remind ourselves, I have to remind myself, that we are just in the second day of the fourth week, okay? So we're, you know, we're still early, but this is part of the year, even in a non-COVID year, we would start doing assessments of children to see where they are. So this, we have some formative assessments, but the other motion, I think it's your first motion, in late October, I think to 26, something like that, whatever that school board meeting is, I'm been asked to present a more comprehensive review of the virtue of our programs, and that's what we'll do. And this will be part of the information that we will use. Next one, Mike, please. Okay, and now I'm going to ask Carrie. I'm sure she could work that, that clicker left feathered me.
Mike, do you want me to say next, too?
Let me see, maybe it could highly have been made. You think it's really working? Carrie, being a good colleague, she will at least make it that the first one won't work.
Test, test, can everybody hear me? Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Kizner. As you're aware, elementary schools recently reached out to parents to determine our families' interest in participating in a K through 2 pilot to bring our students, who we miss so much, back to school. The data that we collected led us to a recommendation from our elementary principals to recommend a K5 return for a date of October 26th for elementary students. And tonight, I'm going to share a little bit more about the backstory with that decision, and then certainly take time for any questions that you all might have. Now, let's see if I can work the clicker. Uh-oh, Mike.
Sorry.
Okay, we're good.
Just say next.
One more. I don't know what I'm supposed to be pointing at, but maybe that would help. All right, that's good, Mike, thank you. So, some of the challenges that came about as we were doing phone calls to families and reaching out to families to find out their interests, and if they were interested in participating in a K2 return, if they would want to stay with their original decision, or if they would want to change their original decision. And this worked both ways, from hybrid, from hybrid to virtual or vice versa. And one of the first things that became apparent that elementary principals shared with me was that we had many parents who were resistant to change the status of one child moving back to a hybrid position, let's say a kindergartner, first or second grader, when their third, fourth, or fifth grader would still be in another model and wouldn't be participating in that. So they were having a difficult time, everything from childcare, just to trying to keep their consistency for their family. And so some of them said, we really don't want to answer right now until, you know, can we, can we do this when we all come back together? Can we send both of our children back together? So you can imagine that certainly created a challenge in trying to figure out how we were going to work with families in that area. Another area to consider is staffing. One of the things that we're looking forward to is bringing our L students. While we feel like our hubs are working very well, we are excited to have those students back in our schools. So when we begin this pi, or not pilot, when we begin to bring our students back K through 5, certainly we'll welcome back our L students, who might be in a different building right now because of the hub situation due to staffing. Transportation is another issue that we thought about for our youngest students. You know, if we have all of K through 2, first of all, that's a substantial routing to figure out. Beyond that, students would most likely have to change buses, so you get them in a routine for two to three weeks, and then they have to change buses when we bring K through 5 back. So we were really struggling with this because the dilemma is, you know, our elementary principals and staff, you know, we really, many of us want to welcome our students back, and all of us want to do what's right for students. But that was a real challenge to figure out how to do that in a seamless way. Finally, a huge challenge for elementary principals was class placement, because in all of the requests to change from virtual to hybrid or vice versa, we definitely saw that we would have to do some extensive work. saw that we would have to do some extensive work in our class placements. And what that might result in is having to do that again, potentially three weeks down the road when we open school up for K through five. So elementary principals felt strongly that it really needed to be a K five endeavor because it would be a more seamless approach to opening and welcoming students back. And so here you see the proposal, which is essentially bringing all hybrid K five students back on the same date to align busing, staffing, family needs. We would contact parents to again find out in grades three through five where we are in terms of what parents would like to see moving forward for their student. We do understand there has to be a point where we may have to say to parents, you know, we're sorry, but this is your choice from this point forward, and we may be limited in making any changes. That's just the reality of having to plan so many hybrid teachers and so many virtual teachers. Again, that changed when we reached out because parents had changed their minds. And I think we can all appreciate that this is a really challenging time, and there are many reasons that a parent may have changed from hybrid to virtual or vice versa. And after schedule for all students, create substantial synchronous instruction four days per week for virtual and hybrid students. So we're going to shift, and I'll show you this in a second, from two days a week, sorry, synchronous instruction to four days a week synchronous instruction. We will review that in just a minute. And then, of course, we would begin on October 26. And so here you see just a kind of a one, two, three of our revision of synchronous instruction, again, from two days to four days, support uninterrupted communication for parents as we are now. Student may have class on a Friday, but they may not see their teacher, well, they'll see their teacher for a morning meeting, but they wouldn't have synchronous instruction for their teacher again until the following Thursday. And that's a long time. And we thought in our original plan that we had, you know, we had asynchronous instruction that would be tailor-made for those students. But we're finding out that it's a long day in synchronous instruction and that they're not getting that continuous communication with their teacher, who's their primary contact, obviously, in elementary school. And so if you look at the next, the next page or the next slide, there is just a sample schedule of what this would look like, and we're going to say this is an A student. So let's say Felicity, if you remember her from our town hall meeting, let's say Felicity is an A student. So she will continue to go to school on Tuesday and Wednesday morning, or she would meet virtually on Tuesday and Wednesday morning with her teacher. And then on Thursday and Friday, rather than being totally asynchronous the entire day on Thursday and Friday, she will actually have synchronous time with her teacher on Thursday and Friday afternoon to continue that learning for four days versus, and the synchronous learning, I should say, for four days rather than two days. And then, of course, on Monday, the teacher would connect as well with a morning meeting. So that would be five days a week that Felicity would see her teacher. And then four days out of those five, get direct instruction from her teacher. And you see the goals at the bottom are the ones that we've mentioned, that I've mentioned several times before. And the current schedules would shift from two days to four days of synchronous instruction. And again, that just allows for more face-to-face time with Felicity, in this case, his teacher. And Mike, if you'll, thank you. So just to summarize, what we are proposing is a K through five hybrid model that would begin on October 26. This would provide consistency for our young learners. It keeps siblings together. There would hopefully be one bus assignment so that students, when they come back, will get in that consistent routine as soon as possible. There would be a minimization of teacher changes because that would be another issue if we had a K two and then we had to make additional changes after a K two, then we could potentially be looking at three different teacher changes. We know that families, we are going to have to make changes because we've had families request changes. So when we make a high, when we move to a hybrid model, we are going to have to make some teacher placement changes in order to honor families' requests for that. And that's, that's just a difficult thing, but we do feel like in working with our Canvas platform and working tightly in our PLCs, the comforting part about that is the lesson and the pacing would be the same. It's just a different second grade, for example, classroom teacher for some students. But we want to minimize that as much as possible. We also want to work to continue creating a Canvas platform that is more accessible for our younger learners. I just met with Lodd yesterday to talk about getting a start on making that process better, making it more seamless for our youngest students. Because we know Canvas was really designed primarily to use at the secondary level. And we know that there are many things about this that are far less than perfect. We are trying to make the best of a very difficult situation, and our teachers are doing an outstanding job. I'll say Dr. Jones and I have been able to head out to elementary schools, and we're able to observe teaching in this virtual state while teachers are in their classrooms teaching. And it's still a really magnificent thing to see. Students are incredibly excited to connect with their classroom teachers, more than you can even imagine. They are so excited to have that connection. But we want to make it more seamless for them. And then, again, we want to make sure our alignment of staffing is, is, is the best that we can possibly provide for all of our students, including our L students and our students with learning disabilities. And finally, what we would like to recommend, in order to just learn about some common best practices that we can implement across the board, is a pilot for kindergarten students that would be in several different key points throughout the division. What we are recommending is Widewater, Rock Hill, Conway, Hartwood, and Kate Waller Barrett. And so those schools are distributed across the county. We feel like it will give us a good pulse for studying our students coming back and learning from the schools that are implementing that. I will say, we're already learning. We're learning from our Head Start and early childhood students. Kathy Massey has been wonderful, sharing different processes that they have learned by doing, including welcoming students in and saying goodbye at the end of the day to students. Those simple processes are really going to take some time for us to, you know, zero in on and figure out the most efficient, effective, and safe way to welcome our students and to then send them off on the buses at the end of the day to make sure they get safely home. So we are already learning. We're going to continue to learn. And I would just like to give a shout out to, could I have my elementary peeps stand up over here? They just showed up. They just wanted to be here. And I have to tell you, if I were in your place, I would take comfort that you have some amazing, amazing, and I know I'm probably not telling you anything you don't already know, but elementary principal leadership, it's just incredible. We have amazing teachers, you already know that. But, you know, it's hard work. We're going to continue to do our best. We're not perfect, but we're going to learn as we go along, and we are going to get better at this. We're going to get better and better. So at this point, I know you may want to hold off on questions, but I'm happy to answer any if you have any now.
Yes, the plan was, let's hold off till our 11.01. I think that is best. I want to thank you, Ms. Neely, for coming and presenting that. I also want to give a huge shout out, I know, from all the board members, to our principals who are here, because I know you have a very early morning start, you have a late day start, and that you all are here. What it demonstrates to me, and I'm sure to all the board members, is your commitment to our students and to delivering the educational and instructional excellence that Stafford County is known for. It's hard in this new environment, but I know that you all have that commitment. And again, thank you all for being here this evening.
And I would just offer to our principals, many of our principals are also parents, and so I'm going to say thank you for being here, guys, but please feel free to go home and watch the rest at home if you would like to.
All right. Dr. Kizner, was there any more? I just wanted to make sure on the health metrics. I know Colette's here. I just didn't know if there was, if she had anything, because otherwise, I was going to move on to staffing update, but I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing an item. Okay, I wasn't missing an item. So the next one on our agenda is our FY21 staffing update. I'll turn that to Dr. Kizner, but I think Mr. Burnett will be, join us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, from masks to glasses. I'm grateful to be here tonight, grateful I have the chance to share this update on where we are for staffing for this school year. As Ms. Neely just shared, the staffing challenges we're presented right now are critically important for us to be able to solve so that we can move towards returning to school. And my hope was that with my presentation tonight, and obviously happy to answer whatever questions you might have, that I'd be able to share a little bit about what we've tried to do as we entered into this school year to bring great talent and keep great talent here in Stafford County, what we've seen so far in the returns with some year-over-year analysis, and a current status report, as well as what we're going to be doing next. So that's what I'm hoping to cover here tonight. I'm going to primarily focus on licensed staff numbers, but if there are any questions about service staff as well, I'm more than happy to answer. Is the clicker working? Okay, I'll just say next. Thanks, Mike. So as we went into hiring for this school year, we set out a couple of goals that we had as our priorities to focus on. First was to emphasize early hiring. We know from experience that candidate pools are richer the earlier in the school year that you start. So we were pretty aggressive early on, offering even before we knew we had guaranteed vacancies and places to make sure that we were securing as many candidates, especially in hardest staff areas. We also looked to expand our outreach to our local schools of education beyond just job fairs. We've always done this with Mary Wash, but we look to do this, starting with a pilot with George Mason as well, to move beyond just job fairs to just showing up, to have table events, to organize lunch and learn sessions. We did a resume workshop at George Mason, for example, just to get our name out with candidates more and increase exposure for the division. We also sought to improve our retention. The best recruitment strategy is a retention strategy that minimizes the number of vacancies you need to fill. I know that when I was last presenting to the board, I talked about some of our efforts on social media, the teacher feature that we've gotten a lot of wonderful feedback on. We're going to be continuing to do that. I'd also be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to acknowledge the Region Three Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kim Cannon from Stafford Middle School, who was just announced on Friday. It was, it was too late to get a special proclamation on the board agenda, but thank you so much for members of the board who joined the announcement. It was the best 15 minutes of my week last week, and I think it was for many others as well. We also tried to make some very technical changes to improve our retention. It's not exciting to talk about, but getting contracts out faster is a great way to keep a hold on people. It was also a big priority for my office to, and for the division as a whole, Dr. Kizner, to diversify our talent pool, particularly to identify more candidates and hire more candidates who identify as Black or Hispanic. There, we wanted to target some new regions that we hadn't traveled to to recruit before. We had plans to do recruitment trip to Puerto Rico for the first time, as well as to go to some colleges in the Mid-Atlantic region in particular that had larger Hispanic-Latino enrollment in their schools of education. We also invested in anticipating in some greater diversity networks that we use through virtual learning pairs. And the last one, and this is just particularly important to me, is that we continue to evaluate our practices, to collect the data, to see how we're doing, see what works, make adjustments. Next, please, Mike. And then the pandemic struck, and we had to pivot to see what we were going to be able to do differently. Instead of our reliance on in-person recruitment fairs, we moved quickly to a virtual recruitment strategy where we used our resume banks to very actively reach out to candidates, to solicit them to sign up for virtual interviews. And while some of the administrators are still here, I want to thank principals and assistant principals who dedicated time to participate in virtual interviews with candidates. We had over 300 virtual interviews. They came in through our website, and it was primarily administrators that were staffing those, and we were very grateful for their time. The strategy that I mentioned about traveling to some new areas to expand our reach to diverse candidates, those had to be shelved, unfortunately. All of those trips were scheduled after the shutdown occurred. And having no presence in those areas previously, we weren't really able to get the beachhead that we were looking for in those regions. And the last thing is that we had to look to utilize technology in new ways. And so, again, while it's not the most exciting topic to talk about, to shift, to do more of our transactional work through our electronic systems, and to make it more feasible for people to do their clearance process and sign their contracts interactively. Next, please, Mike. So the quick headlines to share, some good, some not so great. The good ones that I want to start with is that our retention improved, both at the school level and at the division level. And I think those are both important to look at. If I'm, from my vantage point, if a teacher stays with us and they switch schools, that's great. That's division-level retention, that's fantastic. If I'm a principal, that's still a vacancy that I need to fill in my building. So I try to keep an eye on both the school level and the division-level retention. Both figures, better this year than they were last year, and our figures now are in line with what came out in the most recent state report on retention at both of these levels. So previously, our, our retention had been a little lower than the state average. We're now right at what the state average was in our report that came out in late 2018. The other thing is that we did secure more candidates of color to come join and work for our division. We saw about a 2.5% higher rate of candidates identifying as Black and African-American compared to our returning staff, and a little over 1% of staff of color overall. I don't want to overstate this game, this is not enough, but I do want to celebrate the small win that it represents on, on the path to having a more diverse workforce for our students. The one quick note on this slide, you'll see that there's just asterisks for percent Latino-Hispanic for new hires. That's where the, the reporting number is low enough that it might identify individuals, so had to block that out. Next, please, Mike. So those were the good headlines. There are also some not-so-great headlines. We had fewer hires in licensed position, new to the division, than we did past, in past years, despite openings having decreased. The number of open positions we had went down about 5%, but new hires went down about 13%. And natural result of that, we opened the year with more positions vacant than we did last year. Mike, can you go on? Next one. To talk about the factors, I just want to pause and clarify on the last two slides. That's year-over-year data looking at the last business day before the start of school each year. So it's August 15th last year, August 28th this year, just to give us that year-over-year comparison. So it's not great to come before you and show that we had more vacant positions this year than we did at this point last year. So I wanted to make sure that I went back through the data to try to identify what happened, what led us to that position. Couple of factors stuck out as I looked through the data. The first was a tremendous increase in late resignations and retirements. I shared some of this information at a FAD meeting back in August. But compared to the same period last year, June 15th is the measure date because that's the deadline that's in state code for when teachers must be issued their contracts, when there's kind of no consent needed transfers. We saw a threefold increase in resignations and retirements after that date among our licensed staff this year. So that's about 30 positions increase of those late vacancies. And those late vacancies are, I don't want to put a specific metric on it, but I'll say that they are substantially harder to fill than ones that you can identify earlier in the hiring season. Most candidates have already secured positions, usually by around Memorial Day. So the, and I would say that generally, hiring tends to lag about a month behind when you nail down a vacancy. So it's why it's so important to me that we do as much early hiring even before we have vacancies identified. So those midsummer vacancies really hold you back. We also had about a threefold increase in the number of rescinded acceptances, people who we had secured earlier in the season and who either because of not wanting to relocate, not wanting to change workplace, concerns about economic certainty, concerns about health or childcare, were unable to accept the positions. In a normal year, we would see fewer than 10 people rescind their acceptances. This year, we had almost 30 do so. This year, we had almost 30 do so. You take those two factors into consideration, you pretty much get to the difference in the number of vacancies that we have. One other thing that I would point out is that we did see a really noticeable difference in the demographics of people who left us from last year. Almost twice as many of the people who left the division last year were early career teachers in their first five years. That's a much higher percentage than what we saw in the two years previous. I don't have a firm conclusion on this yet, but it's something that I wanted to note, something that I'm keeping an eye on to think about what our support for our new teachers looks like. Last thing I want to note here is that there were some factors that were less influential than they were in the past. Economic reasons were not cited as frequently for cause for resignation this year as they have been in the past. And on a similar note, fewer candidates indicated they were leaving to go to another school division, not just overall, but also splitting out. So compared to last year, we're more than half of the people who indicated that they were leaving for another school division were going north. That was still the plurality of people, but it was not the strict majority. So I do not think that is a trend that will hold. I think that that is a one-year blip that is mostly related to the pandemic and economic uncertainty, but did want to acknowledge it here tonight. Next, please, Mike. So I'm going to move forward. So everything I talked about previously has been that year-over-year time shot. I'm going to move forward in time to today, or I guess more precisely, end of day on Friday, when we last reconciled our databases. Current positions open is now at 82. That's normal. We usually anticipate seeing the numbers fluctuate a little bit in the first few weeks, and they usually fluctuate up one or two. And so there are presently 82 positions that are vacant, but I wanted to provide the additional context of what are we doing with those positions? Because I think that sometimes people hear the vacant position, and they imagine a room for children, or I guess now a Google meatful of children where there's not an adult present, and that's not the case, of course. Presently, about a third of those positions, we are intentionally holding vacant because whether due to enrollment or to class selection by students or the ability to spread students out into other sections of a class, there's not a present need to fill that position. So we are holding it pending further enrollment, or in some cases, also looking to fill the position come spring if a course offering is warranted. For the other two-thirds, vast majority, these figures actually, if you take away those hold or delay figures, so you're looking at these 54 where we have actively addressed the position, these numbers are actually remarkably similar to last year, both in the numbers and in how they're being used. So the vast majority being covered with a long-term substitute. Sometimes we use a part-time retiree to come in and help with a position. And then we have other mechanisms of internal coverage, whether splitting up an FTE to have teachers take on additional sections, or again, redistributing students across sections. Next, please. Last thing I want to share is what are we going to do about this? What lessons are we taking? So we're going to continue to invest in early hiring, but also in the high-touch pipelines that we have contact with. We're going to continue to expand that presence with schools of education. We appreciate our partnership with Mary Washington, and I'm actually going to be doing a guest session for their students in two weeks on social media. Please wish me luck. I'm a little terrified. I'm not a teacher. But we're going to continue to do more of the appearances with schools of education, both local and remote, as possible. A little bit of Sing for Your Supper will offer a professional development opportunity for their students, and it gives us a free chance to pitch our division. We're also going to put more emphasis into securing information about our student teachers and trying to lock them in early. We found this past year that we hired about 40% of the candidates who were student teachers in our building, but almost similar percentage didn't apply to teach here. That's a tremendously missed opportunity, and we don't want to let that slip by again. And so we're putting some new processes in place to make sure that we have an affirmative answer for each student teacher that comes to train with us. And the last item here, actually, the board has already enabled, is increasing tuition reimbursement that's going to enable us to really deepen the parity teacher pipeline. Those included in the budget for this year, we're very grateful for that expansion. We've seen a lot of interest in it, and it's something that I believe in very deeply because our paraprofessionals obviously already know what a strong and successful classroom looks like, and they're the people who are most likely to, once they become teachers, be able to stay in the profession. We're also going to look to maintain our improvements in retention that we've seen so far. Again, I mentioned that our retention figures were better than last year, and that was in spite of all of those summer resignation or retentions. They were looking amazing prior to that. We want to continue to make progress on that. We're going to keep going with our public recognition efforts. We also, of course, and we know that the board is on this, want to continue to advocate for addressing the pay gap between us and Northern Virginia divisions. The other thing that I want to make sure that I say here tonight is prioritizing HR's participation in the diversity, equity, and inclusion work that Roxanne McCarthy has been leading is a priority that's been put out by this board, by Dr. Kizner. While that work has rightly primarily focused on students for now, Roxanne and I have talked at length about how equity for students, inclusion for students includes ensuring that they have people in their building that they can look to and see that are from similar affinity groups, and that means we have to extend that work to our staff as well. And so I look forward to partnering with her this year on that work. And that connects nicely to how we continue to diversify our candidate pool, especially amongst Black and Hispanic candidates. Those new regions for recruitment, boy, I really hope we can get this pandemic under control because I really want us to be able to get on the road again. And this isn't a personal interest. I would not have been on the Puerto Rico trip, so it would have been other people that would have had that opportunity. But the other thing is to really try to expand and diversify and train a cohort of interviewers and recruiters. I am deeply grateful to our administrators for the time that they give to support recruitment, attending fairs, participating in interviews. But some of the information that we've gleaned from our survey of new hires really shows how that connection with a peer, with a teacher, can be really powerful to influence people to want to come join the division. Principals and APs are our closers. They're the ones that so often our new hires cite as this is the reason I took the job, but our teachers are the hook. And so we want to expand our reach to try to find more teachers that can serve as the forward face of the division and to make it something that is appealing to them, to offer professional development opportunities, training that gives them an opportunity to be recognized as leaders as well for doing this work. And the last thing I'll say is that we learned a lot this spring about recruitment in an all-online environment. I think we do look forward to being able to go to in-person recruitment fairs again, but that doesn't mean we're going to abandon some of the things that we've done online. We learned a lot about how people find our job opportunities and how we can successfully engage with candidates virtually, and how that can expand our candidate pool geographically as well. So we're going to continue to draw the lessons that we can from this year, and we're going to continue to work hard to fill the positions that we have now to ensure that as we return to learning, we've set our students up with the staff that will lead them to success. And I'm happy to take any questions, but Mike, if you can flip to the next, I'll simply note that I'm the person here talking with you here tonight, but the people who did the work are the people whose names are here on this slide. This is the team in human resources that almost every new hire interacted with at least one and maybe as many as half of the people on this list as they made their way to become our employee. They do truly outstanding work every day, and I'm really grateful to work with them. So thanks very much. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions from board members or comments? Ms. Young?
Yes. Thank you so much for that information. I know you and I, we had some sidebar conversations, and I was just wondering, in terms of the diversity talent pool that you were looking at, just like we have that relationship with Mary Washington, did you pursue, for example, Howard University and ODU? And if so, how did that go to try to pull in the teaching schools over there and kind of have some kind of relationship with them to pull in, hook in those students?
Yep. It's one of the things that we're emphasizing this year. We're trying to take advantage of our current environment to develop more relationships with regional schools of education that may not traditionally send students to us for practical experiences, but in an all-virtual environment, that becomes a possibility. I'll actually give some credit to Anne Marie Bellino from LAUD. She came to me about a month ago and said that a former colleague of hers at West Virginia University was struggling to find practical opportunities for students. And so now we have an agreement with WVU, and they have people in our music classes. But we are prioritizing that. Howard and ODU were not specifically on our list, but VSU and Norfolk State were, as an effort to both get students who might be interested in practical experiences, as well as just to develop relationships with the leadership and the faculty in those schools.
Use me for Howard.
Oh.
Well, to Ms. Young's, right before COVID, the dean of George Mason University and the head of the student teaching placement came to Stafford and toured our schools. They are the largest teacher education program in Virginia, and will continue to establish that partnership, but often they stop north of us. And so I'm very optimistic that they will see us as a site for their student teachers.
Awesome. Thank you.
Absolutely.
We can offer them less traffic, sort of.
Dr. Kizner, with that, George Mason, is that something you're looking to have implemented by possibly next spring, or is it even further out than that?
The answer is I would love to do it by spring. I'm not sure if we're, we did create a cohort, just so you know, just to digress real quickly, with four of our neighboring school systems to start at leadership model, so that actually should be going on now. But for the student teaching, we were really going to start at this fall, and that did not take place. So I actually have a meeting with him a week from Friday to continue the conversation.
Any other comments? I have a couple. So of course, some of this is all when COVID is less comments, but I was wondering if we survey our new hires on what was helpful in the process, what was harder at Stafford than, because many new teachers, I think, apply many places, and I'm glad we got them. Is there any thought to doing that or ability to do that?
We did it. Love when I can answer a question like that. Yes, we surveyed all of our new hires who were new hires to the division. So not people who were, say, paraprofessionals who became teachers or subs who became teachers, but people who were new employees to Stafford. And that was not just teachers. We surveyed all new hires because we wanted to get back across the board. Questions related to recruitment, we focused just to people in licensed positions, but there are some questions that we asked to all candidates, including things about going through the hiring process. I was particularly interested in that because you sometimes hear things like, oh, it was a pain to complete this application, which I've heard every single place I've ever worked. And you don't hear the details of, but what was the problem? And so we actually got some very helpful comments in response to that survey of, here were the things that I found frustrating, or I didn't know that this would happen. And that was very beneficial for us.
Following on that, several years ago, we had tried, now I know this is not in COVID, is having a new staff member sort of get to know you about two months in, usually a dinner, food usually brings people, as another opportunity for people to share and find that. I know this year it's not possible, but I hope that doesn't fall off the radar because I actually think there's a lot, at the time, we had like board members sit at different tables and just get to meet some of the new staff, because it's sometimes nice to find another colleague that's maybe in your same, like I said, I understand we can't, but if it was me, I would love to put that back in the budget because I think there was a lot to be gained because it was also get to meet a board member. And, you know, many of them do meet Dr. Kizner, but you never know. And I just think that's a great opportunity for us to hear what brought you here. And then I'm all about, and I'm sure poor Mr. Fulmer will cringe when I say it, but I'd love to have, if somebody from a particular university came here and they loved it, and then they were a rock star and went back and recruited at their, some kind of financial, okay, you can't call it a finder's fee, I don't know what you call it, but something like that, because many times, I remember when I went to school, it's sort of a different thing, all of a sudden, a particular university became popular because somebody from the high school went there or something. I mean, it's very simple, but you know what? If we could make that attractive, it's always nice if you go back and you hire your good friends and you know. So just something to look into.
It's absolutely true, and certainly that has been a huge pipeline of success for us is to utilize folks who are recent alums to come with us on trips, and that's something that we really hope to be able to utilize. We tested out some different things in terms of technology this year to support recruitment. Some of them worked out, some of them didn't. That's okay. That's why we piloted them and made sure that we weren't locking ourselves into longer-term contracts when we didn't know if something was going to work. One of the things that we're going to try to be doing this year is we're looking to add some social media engagement tracking software that we hope is also going to enable us to target hosts places so that we can get that regional amplification in areas when warranted.
Thank you.
If I could just, you know, we're talking about getting people here, but we want to keep people, and the research really does speak a lot, I know Patrick knows this more than I do, but about people feeling part of a community, finding friends, feeling a sense of belonging, wanting to be here. And that's just something for the school board to think about. Are there strategies that we could partner with, different groups? You know, we hire a lot of young people that are, you know, I was confused when I first got here. I thought I was in Pittsburgh. Everybody got a Steeler banner, and you know, you're here, you may not have family, you may not really have friends in the beginning. How do we get them connected? There's a survey that a lot of school systems give on staff engagement, and they have a question that is an interesting question, but it has a lot of validity. Do you have a best friend? And those that report that they have a best friend at work, it's a strong correlation that they will stay longer. So I know that's something Patrick has been looking at.
Absolutely. We actually, we had some really great conversations with our friends at SCA about things where we could partner going forward, about ways to, we could really jointly create different affinity groups for folks that came from different regions. I won't use the example Dr. Kizner did as a proud Cleveland Browns fan, proud and long-suffering Cleveland Browns fan, but we were looking for ways that we could use different affinity groups as a way to help build senses of belonging beyond just your content group or your school.
All right. Thank you very much for bringing all that information. We look forward to next year's report and for more successes. Our next item is our enrollment accommodation report. Dr. Kizner and I believe Mr. White will be, come on down.
Those who did not, please appreciate the difference from previous years to this year on this report. I hope there's a lot of work behind this report, so I'm going to thank them now. All right? Because I'll forget later.
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Chairman, Chairperson Hazard, members of the school board.
Remember, you're a tall person, and you need to.
Thank you.
We want to hear you.
Okay, is that better?
That's great.
Okay, I'll start over again. Good evening, Chairperson Hazard, members of the school board, Doc Kizner. This evening, I'm going to present to you the enrollment and accommodation plan. Just to give you some background, for over a decade, the Student Accommodation Report provided a comprehensive look at recent trends, enrollment projections, and building capacity to help plan for future seat needs. This year, what's new is the Student Accommodation Report has been renamed the Enrollment Accommodation Plan. It's been expanded to be a much more robust, long-range planning document over the next 10 years. New features in the document include more analytics, maps, charts, and graphs to show demographic trends. GIS is used a lot to illustrate when and where additional seats are needed in the future based on our enrollment projections. Also, from a house cleaning note, what you have in front of you is the 2019-2020 EAP, and that was finalized in February of 2020. So if you look at the report, you'll see that at the bottom corner. This is important to note because this report was prepared pre-COVID, and the projections are based on September 30 of 2019, so they have not been updated. However, next week, planning staff will begin the process of working on the 2020-2021 EAP, and it will be a post-COVID-19 document. Just wanted to put that out there. Just wanted to put that out there. Also want to point out that, you know, this plan is driven by the enrollment projections. And I want to make that absolutely clear, none of this stuff is set in stone because enrollment projections, they look at past history and based on those, that history and those trends, they anticipate what's going to happen in the future. It's not saying that this stuff is going to happen exactly as the projections say. And I just want to put that out there because sometimes people get a little confused when they see projections, they think, oh, it's supposed to be exactly this number. And I just want to be clear about that, that likely won't be exactly that number. Of course, the intent of the EAP is to update stakeholders, that being school board, county, the public, about our 10-year enrollment projections as well. It helps all to plan for future seat, uh, seat needs. So what I'd like to do, sort of browse through the document in front of you, I'll mention a couple of page numbers of note, more common pages. I start off by saying that in the report, there's information on past, present, and projected student enrollment. Based on our projections, we're slated to grow 4,800 students over the next decade. An interesting chart in the report on page eight shows our annual growth percentage. And one of the things you'll notice on page eight, when you look at that chart, number eight, you'll see the percent growth rate. What's important about that percent rate, you'll notice it's below 2%. 2% is considered a high growth rate, so according to our projections, we're slated to grow at a moderate pace. I just want to make that clear. Also, you can see on the chart, the actual enrollment projection numbers. And again, these numbers are based on the 2019 projections. All right. I'll move on and jump to the chart number 10 on page 11. Usually with projections, everybody asks, what's your births look like? And so here's what our births look like. And you'll notice they're relatively flat at about 1,700 or so births, resident live births each year from 2006 through 2018. So we've pretty much grown at a fairly constant rate, which is good. And another chart of interest is on page 14. That's our residential projects. So one of the things we hear is, you're growing, well, why are you growing? And everyone wants to obviously look first at, well, where's the housing coming from? And what's it slated to be? So the map on page 14 shows you where new developments are slated to be. And we got this information from our county, from our county planning department. And they were also kind enough to provide us with information on the name of the subdivision, how many units are planned and approved, and so forth. Well, the key takeaway from this map is that the county planning data revealed that there were 100 active residential projects with a total of 7,548 vacant lots. And the breakdown of those lots, 82% were single-family detached homes, 11% were town homes or single-family attached homes, and then the remaining 7% were multifamily units. So what's important about that is, according to the data, single-family homes is, is the majority of this new development and we typically get really high yields from both single-family and multifamily, I'm sorry, single-family and town homes generate our highest student yields. Okay, so now I'm going to jump to pages 31 and 32. So in the past, when we had the enrollment projections, we had sort of a chicklets chart where you would see numbers and you would see yellow, green, red. And to me, first thing, when I saw that thing, I go, what are you going to make of this? You can't see anything. I mean, it's there, but to me, it needed to be displayed sort of in a map format. And so what we wanted to do as part of our enhancement to the report was to put this sort of in a map and so you could visualize what that means. So I just want to point out on page 31 that this is our projected enrollment growth in 2024. The colors of note are red and orange. Those show seat deficits, those colors. And the numbers below the school names identify if there's a surplus of seats or if there's a deficit of seats. And so that's how you sort of read that information. And so we have this in the midterm, which is 2024, and we have this in the long-term, which is 2029. And you can sort of, if you flip between pages 31 and 32, you can sort of see how the colors change over time and they get, the crowding gets a little worse. So there are, is definitely a need for more elementary schools in the future. Okay. Now I'm going to jump really quickly to pages 34 and 35, which shows the projected middle school growth. And one thing to note on page 34, which is the 2024 growth, we can see that pretty much along the sort of, I guess you would call it the Highway 95 corridor, those schools are slated to have seat deficits. And the majority of our schools at this time are, there are seats available, most notably, Dixon Smith in 2024 is slated for 333 seats open. Of course, when we have this situation, we typically look at things like boundary changes and so forth to balance enrollment so that we use the capacity that we have wisely and efficiently. And of course, if you jump to page 35, you flip, you can see how those orange areas quickly turn red. And red's not a good thing, red's bad. Green's good. We see that Drew, Stafford, and Heim are slated, and Poole, to have seat deficits there in the red. Okay. So this clearly shows there'll be a need to balance enrollment and more seats in the future at the middle school level. So now I'll jump to page 37, which shows our projected high school growth. If you look at that map, you can see in 2024, Brookpoint is slated to have the most crowding. They're slated to be a deficit of 306 seats. And if we look at the neighboring high schools, we see that there are some deficits at neighboring high schools. So boundary change, not looking too good. We'll have to definitely have more high school seats. And of course, we'll talk about that very shortly in our Large Capital Projects, CIP. So I just wanted to share this information with you and I'd like to open up the floor if you have any questions.
Madam Chair. Lionel, can you clarify, we talked a little bit about this at the Fab, but specifically that 306-seat deficit at Brookpoint, this does not include the estimated or the anticipated sixth high school. This is, this is pre-building of High School Number Six.
That is correct.
And so you said we didn't do another map.
For 2029.
Right.
Because.
But do we have an idea of how, after we build High School Number Six, how much that 306 deficit at Brookpoint will go down?
Um, we do. It will go down because when we add, I believe it's 2,150 seats.
Okay.
It will definitely bring it down, but then we'll also need to, of course, balance enrollment with those seats at a new high school.
Of course.
So it will definitely help. However, if you look on page, well, actually, it's not in this document, but I did research this, in the out-years of the projection by 2029, we're still going to be, we're going to be above 90% and we'll need to plan for another high school. And so just to sort of jump ahead a little bit, we have projected crowding concerns at all three school levels and one school will not fix the problem and that's at the high school level. That's also true at the elementary level. So just want to let you know that in the out-years, we're going to be above 90% with the new schools in capacity.
So to sum it up, basically, we're in a world of hurt going forward.
Well, we're, yeah, we're, we'll definitely need more capacity based on our current guidelines, the way we operate, where we start to plan once we reach 90%.
And then just another quick question, when you were putting this packet together and you were doing all your projections, the county played a role in, in developing these numbers too, correct?
Uh, they did in terms of residential development. So we have different data sources and it's sort of, each data source is sort of referenced in the document. We have birth data from the state, residential housing data from the county, also we have internal data for our cohort transitions and, you know, information like that from our synergy student information system. So it's a combination of data coming from multiple sources.
Okay, so has the county seen this document yet?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so when, when is your next joint CIP get-together with the county?
Actually, Ms. Holoback, let me, I know that poor Dr. Kizner's been on my, was on this, I believe Dr. Warner was on my, I think this is a fabulous document. I actually think if, I know there was maybe a comment that for Dr. Kizner every once in a while to go over to the board supervisors, not when we have an issue exactly pending, but to present data. To me, this is the document.
Okay.
We need to make sure that is in their hands. Now, whether we go and present it or not, but I would just.
That's where I was going with.
Well, I was just going to say to each board member, if you want an extra copy of it to hand to your, but I think Dr. Kizner and I talked about, I, I do think this is a very well-done document, very readable, but it also needs to be in other elected officials' hands.
Thank you.
And the security one, I was thinking.
Microphone. Microphone.
Thank you. One thing we want to make sure is that you saw it before we presented to them.
But even though this tells the story of our school system per se, I also think that it's very well laid out in telling a story to them about their, about what's going on in the county in a different way than maybe they're used to seeing it as well. So I mean, while we'll say it tells a school story, I really do think it speaks to more, in a broader sense, the county story. So very well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns?
Just, just a quick housekeeping. So now we're calling it EAP, not SAR. So all the other documents need to be changed or anything that we had in the past stays the same and then moving forward? Okay.
Yes.
I'm going to Ms. Randall's point. There are other statistics in here and I'm glad we focused on the growth because of the upcoming agenda items we have coming. But I would just want to point out one particular fact in here that was fascinating, which is on page seven, says 10 years ago, zero, Stafford County Public School Elementary Schools had free lunch populations above 30%. Today, over half of our elementary schools have free lunch populations over 30%. That's a figure that we as a school division, but as Ms. Randall was alluding to, we as a county need to look into from a resource perspective. There are many other facts. That one to me was, thank you for stating it that way because I think that gives, you know, a 10-year swing, we have to be planning. The only other one, and Ms. Healy, I'm not trying to go into your district, I did look at some of the figures that you have for AG Wright. I have to say though, every year, AG Wright comes in high for some reason. Now, I can't speak to this year, but just keep an eye on that school, even though we always are projecting it goes lower, somehow, there always seems to be a lot of people, a lot of students at AG Wright, just to keep that, I'm not trying to, my daughter went there, so I know that as well.
And mine as well. And we all love our principal as, as we love the principals in all our schools.
But I was just saying, keep an eye on that one. It tends to run high, even if we think on paper it doesn't. So just from some experience, thank you again for an excellent document.
Ms. Hazard, can I comment, sort of to piggyback where you described even the, the change that we had in the, the free lunch. We also, I also think it's worth noting, not just from our side, but from the county side as well, is our changing demographics. I mean, we heard it earlier and I think that it is something to note, you know, as we put resources for, you know, the different cultures, different languages on school side, I also think that it's appropriate for the supervisors to consider it in resources on their side too. So I really appreciate the way you put the different elements that you put in this document. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Young had a final comment?
Yes. Thank you again. So on the land acquisition, you have it highlighted here on page 20, of course, will be planned for at least two years prior to preliminary planning period, but may occur simultaneously for all school levels. Has anything changed in your perspective once you completed this document in terms of what you were looking at prior, land acquisition-wise?
Um, well, one of the things is that some of the preliminary planning and the land acquisitions, those processes can run concurrently. So that's one observation.
Okay, so like looking at some of the data that you have here, it seems like the north is also becoming more populated. And so I was wondering, I think that at some point in time, the land acquisition that you all were looking at was like catered in a certain location. So I'm wondering if you're going to plan in on expanding that a little bit more to include other land? That, that was really my question.
Okay, the answer is yes. We are going to be looking at that as part of next year's, or this year's enrollment accommodation plan. So there'll definitely be some, that'll definitely be a part of the document.
Okay, thank you. So that should be added back in then?
Yeah, well, yeah, there'll definitely be some language about, we need more sites.
Got it.
And yeah.
Thank you.
And Dr. Kizner, just as a final note, and I'm sorry, there are so many good facts about, you know, we've all named some of those. I'm wondering if we, as the school division, maybe our communications office might want to put kind of facts about Stafford County Public Schools or the county even, based on at least some of the facts in here, just something to think about going forward because telling our story to the community is equally, is important.
Maybe on the website? Is that what you're talking about?
Something, just, just something to think about going forward. I'm not saying the model, you all have that, but there is great stuff in here. So, yes, Lionel, thank you for an excellent report.
Thank you.
All right, we have two opportunities for our public comment this evening. We have two separate hearings. So there's going to be our public budget hearing first, but I'm going to just go through the, the things that each speaker needs to do that will cover both of them. So I'm just going to open it up for, each speaker is allotted two minutes. When speaking, please first clearly state your name and voting district if known. And if you wish to submit comments, actually would have already had to have done that by now, prior to the meeting, we will ask you to come forward to the podium and at two minutes, I don't think there's the lights as well, but anyway, we will be open for public comment this night. First, we have our public budget hearing. I do not have anybody signed up to speak to that topic. However, if you didn't get your name on the list, you are not prohibited. So if there's anyone here tonight that would like to speak only on our budget FY22, which is next year's budget, a budget priority, please come on down. Okay, hearing nobody, then I'm going to move, same rules apply for our general citizen comments tonight. I have one person signed up, I believe Mr. Reichert, if you would like to come on down. And if there is anybody else who was here to speak, if you would go ahead and stand on the aisle so you can quickly, not crowding Mr. Reichert, come forward, I would appreciate it. Welcome, Mr. Reichert. Welcome, Mr. Reichert.
Thank you. My name's Dan Reichert. I live in the George Washington District, and I teach fifth grade at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kizner. It's all about kids. Those are the words I've driven by the past nine years as I arrive at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary each day. It's all about kids. A mantra holding the deepest belief in my soul. Every day, every moment, it's all about kids. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the brilliant, intelligent, beautiful, incredible kids of Kate Waller Barrett Elementary, my students, our students. I'm here for the kids who now have a Chromebook, but an internet connection so weak, they get kicked out of our meeting 10 to 15 times each day. Although internet cafe is an option for some, it still does not adequately resolve the issues of freezing screens and dropped connections. I'm here for the kids whose families are working a second shift right now, just to put food on the table and to pay the rent. Those kids who are trying to independently navigate Canvas, a learning management platform designed for students far older than 10 years old. I'm here for the kids who wake themselves up to come to school each day for that special relationship and that sense of belonging. I'm here for our kids. When I'm teaching a lesson in class, I always ask my scholars, how was my teaching? Did that make sense? So after four weeks of Google meets and Canvas modules, I have come to one conclusion, our current model doesn't work. My students, my kids, they're on the wrong side of an equity gap that expands by the day. I'm not here to criticize decisions made. My principal always reminds me to assume good intent. I'm here to ask, how can we make this work for our kids? I invite you to visit one of my Google meets from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, not just a quick drop in or wave hello, all five hours. Use that visit to form your opinion. Ask all teachers how it's going. Give a voice to those who are so immersed in the work that they don't have time for the politics. Those educators need to be heard. Kate Waller Barrett is a home. It's a place of love, acceptance, belief. It's a home that truly can't be replaced in the virtual world. It's time to safely bring our kids back home to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reichert. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? All right, hearing none, I'm going to close both public comment, and then we will be moving on to, sorry, I have to, our board committee reports. Dr. Warner, do you want to give us an overview of finance and budget, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on September 14th, and one of the primary things that we reviewed was the CIP, which we do have a recommendation, which I believe they will be going over later. But basically, given the growth patterns that we anticipate, we wanted to make sure that, you know, the high school number six is at the top of the priorities, elementary school number 17, and we added middle school number nine. We'd like to, given the cost of renovations it drew and the limitations with that property, it's only on 15 acres, it's one of our oldest schools in the district, is to maybe reimagine and repurpose it and adjust the, the costs, I think, which were around 27 million accordingly. It's always difficult to look at these long-term plans and try to figure out how we're going to accommodate all these students with so few resource, with few resources. We've discussed budget priorities, which I think are still something that, that we're starting to form some ideas about. And we talked about the possibility of establishing a budgeting protocol for our unfunded projects, maybe a percentage from the county budget instead of a flat rate, which might be more effective, and it would also be a dynamic, dynamic number that changes over time. We were given a technology projects update, which we had, we have authorized a number of technology infrastructure items on over the last, I don't know, year. I just went back and reviewed them, and some of them are helping with the super kajees and the kajees, firewall systems and other, other technology that we were updated on. We also voted to recommend a health premium holiday, which I'm going to let Ms. Hollaback discuss. She brought this to the Fab meeting. I think it was a great idea.
Actually, this is something that's been done in the past. When Dr. Chase was on the, was on the Fab and leading the Fab, I guess with, with some, I can't say excess money, but we had a little extra in our, in our kitty, and we gave it back to our employees through a, a healthcare holiday. What we discussed was, actually, Chris, would you mind coming up and just doing a quick?
Let's wait till we get to that agenda item.
Is it off?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go ahead and do that.
So we'll do that.
I don't want to, I don't want to speak out of turn, so when we get there, Chris can articulate that a little bit better than I can.
Thank you.
Ms. Randall, would you like to-
Chase was not on the Fab by herself.
Governance.
Sure. So we met last week on Thursday as a governance committee, and the first thing was we changed Charlene Green's professional development with us to October 2nd from 7:00 to 9:00. And we're working on a location, we think North Stafford, in the area just outside the library. On the November 18th and 19th, the school board dinner or service event, we decided rather than doing a school board dinner with the cabinet, that we opted to do a service event. And then we decided that we got, well, we got excited in the conversation, and rather than choose November 18th or 19th, we decided to double the fun and double the pleasure and make it both nights for a service event. And that way, our school board and staff could either sign up for one, both, or for participation. And we're looking to make a dinner event that we host. We prepare food, we clean up, we set up, and we're working currently on who that target group will be, and hopefully even have some input as to location, maybe one night in the north and one night in the south end, to try and serve some of our families in our community. The superintendent and clerks evaluations, I had Missy send out your availability basically for the month of October. If you would please, I think there's only a couple of us that have filled it out, but we need to finalize this, if you would, board members, do so. The last part was structure and the streamlining of standing committees. And attached to this is a overview of what we're looking at in restructuring our committees as we go forward, and I would love to get your input and, from the board and suggestions. And if you tell me, scratch this, Susan, start over, I won't get my feelings hurt. So just any input that you would like to give would be helpful, and we look for this to be voted on in the November timeframe, to kick off in the January timeframe, when we renegotiate where we are with committees and such. So that's where we are. Thanks.
Thank you for the great committee work. Next is our superintendent comments. Dr. Kizner.
Two quick things. First, I want to thank Kathy Massey and the Rising Star staff. Today, we had Virginia's First Lady, Ms. Pamela Nordham, come visit the school, and it was really a very positive visit. She had a chance to enter many classrooms, and just to let you know, the kids were socially distancing, wearing their masks, and they were learning. And then she, Kathy had all the kids come to the cafeteria, and she read to the students. So it was a very positive visit. I also, I know we've been getting some emails from people wondering why the day is so long, like what can we do to abbreviate the day? And believe me, I, I asked that same question, and I think some of you know I spoke to the State Board of Education last week, and, but anyway, I want to give you, what you have in front of you, I won't go over, but you have the official memo from the state superintendent that helps explain. And if you want to read any portion that's related to this notion of length of a school day, either synchronous or asynchronous, I would read the page two, the court instruction time requirements, and top of page three, that would kind of ask, answer your question. And you'll see very clearly, they have not waived that component, even in a COVID learning environment. So I just wanted to give you what I've been sharing with different people.
Can you put this on the website for our parents to see?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And is it, do you think that there's a, will it never change? Or will, is there a possibility that it could still change? What are we, are we-
So I, I never use the word impossible. I know that since my opportunity to speak, I've been approached to speak more about it. I'm also going to be sometime next week, meeting with the Virginia School Superintendent Association, whatever organization I belong to, the executive board to have this conversation. So I feel like it needs to have more conversation. I don't think they recognize what the ramifications are, especially to younger children. And it's not even the children, it's also the adults. You heard Mr. Reichert completely accurate. It's about the children first, but a lot of adults are working remarkably hard and stressed out. So I, I don't know what your governance structure is with V SBA, but I think it would not hurt if you have a delegate or know who the delegate is, to also bring this up. More stakeholders, I think, greater chance, it has a chance of being changed.
Can I ask a quick question? I, I heard on the radio yesterday, and maybe it was in the V SBA brief as well, that one of the schools in Richmond, outside of Richmond, was shortening the day, and I don't know if they were just shortening the amount that students had to be logged on to the computer or something along that line?
Yeah, I, I read it also. I'm not, I'm not familiar with, I think it was the V SBA. I, I'm just really not familiar with it to give an answer.
I saw it as well.
I will say at the high school, middle school, I know Ms. Dr. Greider's here, we actually had to increase more at the middle school because we recognized that we were not meeting, and it's more hours at the elementary, if you read it, 680 at the elementary, it's 560 at the high, at the middle and high school and the core subject. So what we did talk about, if I have this real quickly, and some of you heard it at the end of the YouTube tape, that Dr. Lane did give a good suggestion, that I think, we talked about it at the elementary principals' meeting yesterday. You could read books. You don't have to go on computer. If you're working with your family, if you're going to a pumpkin patch, talk about the science and the art and the math of a pumpkin patch, or sing a song about the pumpkin patch, whatever. If you're cooking with your, your parents, talk about measuring and things of that nature. So I think, and I've actually asked in our planning, to begin to shift a little bit away from that term asynchronous, maybe have something along with it, because there's other learning. And yesterday's meeting was at the Falmouth Library, and we're sitting there, I'm sitting there, I'm staring at all these books. I'm thinking, you know, these books need to be where the little kids are. And, and we talked about that. So I, I think even if the state doesn't give us relief, this is really where I'm going with it. We're going to design, and I think Carrie already alluded to that, we're going to revisit our model to give relief in a more natural way than just thinking that it has to be either live, online, or not live, online.
I will, can I just add one thing? One of the things I would like to, I, you know, you sent it to me to watch what you were saying and, and the conversation and how it was supported with other superintendents. But one of the things that I, I was impressed about with Dr. Kizner in that conversation was how much he was advocating for the, the undoing of our teachers right now with the amount of hours, not a traditional workday, but putting in 10, 14 hours a day, and they, that this is hurting their families. He was also speaking about the kids, and yes, elementary, but, you know, as some of us received letters in the middle and high school that, you know, we had an asynchronous day that might have just been atypical, and I think as the kinks are being worked out, they'll, they will become better as we learn to understand what asynchronous can be. But, you know, we're talking about families that are stressed out, kids that are stressed out, the teachers that are stressed out, you know? And again, speaking to what Mr. Reichert was even saying, they just want the kids back, and I know we're working towards that, especially in the elementary. And we'll talk later, of course, about the middle and the high. But I just really want to say, you know, it was, the letters that we receive is one part of it, but Dr. Kizner was very strong in advocating for what our teachers are going through. And we don't want them, we don't want them sick, we don't want them hurt, we don't want them leaving, we want them here. And we need to find ways, A, of appreciating them, but also, B, relieving them of these hours and hours they're putting in. So I just wanted to give, thank you, Dr. Kizner, for your support of them and our families.
I have to tell you something real funny from my, and I know I broke a rule, Ms. Healy, I apologize right now. I checked my texts, and my wife told me that the way I speak, I guess we have translation under, and some of my words have been translated differently because they don't have a New York translator, so.
I would just like to add on to what Ms. Randall said, and for Dr. Kizner advocating for us in some of those other areas. I think something that, for those who are listening and who write their elected officials, it was not a year ago, and in our legislative priorities, we have put, Virginia is not at the top of our payment scale as a, as a state, as a state, the Commonwealth. And there has been at least interest at the elected level of, why? Why is this happening? I would think maybe we can push that in the direction a little bit, Dr. Kizner, where you're going. But to say to our legislators, you've asked us these questions, why are people leaving? And we talk about pay, we talk about that, but we've also always talked about work environment. And what is the legislature, our Department of Education and others doing to make sure we retain our teachers? I know we talked about it with Mr. Burnett, obviously, tonight, on what we can do in Stafford, but our hands are only so tied, I mean, we only can do so much if there's not some flexibility at the state. So I would just encourage us maybe to reexamine, and Dr. Kizner, you're better at this than I am, but that, that that may be another way to sort of push that, if that makes any sense. All right, moving on to our consent items, which are three. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the three consent items, 9201, 2, and 3.
I've already heard the second. Any deletions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All consent items are approved. Action item.
Madam Chair, can we take like a three-minute break? We've, we've been sitting here for almost two hours now, and I think the next couple of agenda items are going to keep us in our seats a little bit longer.
All right, then we will do a point of privilege. Everybody, five-minute break, get up, walk around, and be back, please, in five minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Right, there's been a move in second, however, I believe because last time, there were not the written materials associated with it with the board, like a quick overview of what's being brought before the board tonight, so there can be time for questions.
Has it not been put on the agenda since then?
Yes, but I think an overview is in order, since it has not been.
I just wanted.
So I don't know if it will be Dr. Nichols or who will be presenting this evening.
I just wanted the parents to know that it's on there this time.
Yes, it has been on since Thursday night.
Yes. We provided for the public, we provided our timeline for the implementation of activities and athletics for the community, where we would start training our coaches and have them trained by the 30th, if approved tonight. We'd start for a three-week period on the 5th of October and go through the 23rd of October with a phase three, at which time we will review with our athletic and activities directors, and Mr. Justice, myself, and we'll review these processes to make sure everything's going smoothly. At that point, we would go into phase three, which the difference between phase two and phase three is that you're doing individual skill development, more conditioning activities in phase two. Phase three would allow some equipment and specific drill skill development. And then we would then hopefully go into the winter season, which starts on December 7th. And again, other activities and teams would still continue with their phase three out-of-season conditioning. And again, out-of-season conditioning was not required, as we've had that all along for many years, and it's not required, it's optional for coaches and for athletes. We also have on the website, the parent consent form, which just to emphasize some of the testing that we would do as far as temperature checks, sickness, some of the hydration, making sure students bring water bottles, they're not sharing gear, picking up things that do not belong with them, and then maintaining, wearing a mask and maintaining a six feet of social distance unless they're involved in a strenuous activity in which 10 feet is maintained during that strenuous time. And then we also have is the Stafford County Public Schools' phase two and phase three plan, which was adopted from the federal, the National Federation of High School, and then the Virginia High School League, and we adopted that to meet Stafford County's needs. And all the three documents were posted last week.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Are there questions? Dr. Chase, start us off.
So first of all, I just want to say, I know that Dr. Nichols cares a lot about the kids in Stafford County, and there's no question. But I have a lot of questions, and I just want to get that out there. I was curious where the plan is for the non-athletic V H S L-sponsored activities, so broadcasting, debate, forensics, robotics, theater, band. I didn't see any plan, and I'm getting emails saying, please let us have extracurriculars back, but I didn't see a plan for anything but athletics.
We had athletics, activities, marching band, and J R O T C when we spoke last time. With the other activities, the non, or the V H S L academic activities commence in the spring.
Okay.
And we would develop, and again, following if we're back in the school or not, in the timeline that you put forth earlier, we'd be back in our buildings at that time. With that, we are recommending that right now, they're continuing to do their virtual meetings right now. And again, these were out-of-season conditioning activities, and there weren't a lot of conditioning for those, with the exception of the R O T C and also marching band, which.
Right, I just didn't see anything that referenced anything specific for R O T C or band in the plan. I just saw things that were specific to athletic conditioning. So I just was kind of curious where that was.
And we worked with the athletic directors and activities directors in the high schools, and we also worked with Mrs. Anna Marie Bellino with the marching band. And part of that is also, phase two is the conditioning part, where they're doing their steps, they're doing their, laying out their performances, where they would do the conditioning aspect. Phase three with marching band would allow instruments to come back into place where they could start doing tuning. And we did put together a model plan for the marching band that she put together with her directors, which would include where they would, once they finished their testing, they'd have a time where they would do some marching, stretching, preparing for the strenuous activities of going through their processions, and then also doing tuning and also playing. The J R O T C, and talking with them, again, they do a lot of calisthenics, which could be conditioning activities using their own body weight, running, sprinting, preparing for their marching, which was all part of what we put into the activities on the conditioning in phase two and phase three.
Okay. And then, so I see in the timeline, you know, you talk about some conditioning activities. It also says here that you will discuss the option for certain sports and activities to move inside for continued conditioning and skill development activities. Examples are basketball and volleyball. So can you tell me what sort of health metrics you will be using to make these decisions? What specific information you'll use to decide about allowing athletes to be indoors?
Yeah, we are going to be tracking our metrics, and we are testing all our students when they get there, as far as their temperatures, answering questions to make sure that they haven't been exposed, whether, how they're feeling. Those forms will be collected each evening. After practices, they'll be emailed to the athletic director and to Mr. Justice. They'll be keeping those records and tabulating.
All right, I would like to welcome everybody back.
We're going to be working to make sure that any cases or outbreaks, we'll have to follow mitigation plans, following and working with Colette, just as we are in the schools, and looking at our current data from our schools as far as number of participants who are coming out. We've heard from several teams that probably will not be utilizing the conditioning because their kids are involved in some travel teams right now, some of the, I guess, fall activities. But we'll be evaluating the processes based on feedback from our athletic directors, who will be out there watching, supervising, along with the coaches and their quantitative feedback, ma'am.
Okay. And then I saw in the V H S L guidelines that a parent helpfully sent to me, under guiding principle number two, it states, individuals who are at higher risk for severe disease should take extra precautions or sometimes choose not to participate. This includes individuals who have chronic lung disease, moderate or severe asthma, serious heart conditions, immunocompromised, or take immunosuppressant medication, severely obese, diabetes, chronic kidney disease or dialysis, or those over 65 years. Clearly, 65 years doesn't refer to our students, but can we, can you include that in the consent form so that it is in writing to people that they need to be aware that, that if their children have moderate asthma, if their children are diabetic, they should not be participating?
Yeah, we also are requiring, if you look at our phase guidance, we're requiring athletic physicals for all students to participate in the conditioning. And on their physical forms, they do identify conditions, and the doctors would identify whether they can participate or not.
Okay, so, so do we usually not allow children with diabetes to participate in sports?
No, we allow them, they just, we're just made aware of it so we can maintain their health plan.
Okay, so I'm just saying, given that this is a different situation, I just want to make sure that, that, I mean, I don't know if you have a completely different physical form, or if it's the same.
It's the same Virginia High School League form that we utilize.
I think that would be in violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act, wouldn't it? To simply say, be aware.
I think it may be a better, a different approach would be to consult your physician, something to that effect, but not, I mean, I could tell, I mean, not that I really want to get too personal, but I have a family member who's asthmatic, and she was also an athlete, and she has it controlled, and if she was in a high school, she would play. And, but we would probably consult with her doctor, but I surely would want the school to tell her she can't play because she's asthmatic.
Especially the students that operate under a 504, we would clearly be in violation of 504.
Right, and I wasn't suggesting that they, that we would, but what I'm saying is, I want to make sure that, the assumption that doctors will always tell you during a physical about the risks of COVID, that may or may not happen. And so I just want to make sure that we don't have students who are coming in to play and that they don't understand that there may be a greater risk. So I don't know if the physical form says, be sure to talk to your doctor about COVID risks, or something. I just don't want that to fall through the cracks. So that was just another sort of thing that I was concerned about.
And piggybacking on that, in looking at your participation consent form, it doesn't say to have a physical, so maybe adding that in there and then referencing maybe some of the concerns that Dr. Chase has, might, because it doesn't say it in here, obviously, you're saying it needs to be there, but as part of the consent, letting parents know, your child must have a physical, please be advised that, you know, during COVID, you might want to pay, or make sure that your doctor is aware that your child is participating in a physical activity at their high school during this pandemic or COVID, or whatever you want to call it, to make sure they have approval.
Absolutely, we can add.
And then in the V H S L guidelines, you had like everything they had, except the part that said, students must be encouraged to shower and wash their workout clothing immediately upon returning home. So you might want to add that as another thing that is recommended by V H S L. And then the other thing that I read there that I wasn't sure I saw in the plan, due to the possibility of recurrent outbreaks in the coming months, schools must be prepared for periodic school closures and the possibility of some teams having to isolate for two or more weeks while in season. Development of policies is recommended regarding practice and/or competition during temporary school closures, the cancellation of contests during the regular season, and parameters for the cancellation or premature ending to postseason events and competitions. So have we developed these policies?
Ma'am, what we presented tonight was the out-of-season practice for phase two and three.
Okay.
If approved, and we can move into contests, and that's approved for December, we'll have the return to action process also.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone on this side? Ms. Healy, you want to start us?
Dr. Nichols, I've asked in the past when we've had this discussion, are we going to provide any transportation for students? In the past, we've had activity buses to take them home, but that's when they were already at school. I mean, I assume that based on this, there's a plan for a lot of students to be either driving themselves or driven by their parents, but we have a significant population that is not going to be in that category. Have we considered, or are we in a position to offer activity buses to transport students to and from this conditioning?
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Sudeth regarding the transportation. Based on need, traditionally, we've not had issues with kids getting to the out-of-season workouts, talking with our athletic directors and our principals. Not to say that's not different now, but in talking with Mr. Sudeth, he did say that we could implement based on need, and reaching out, finding if we have a need. He said we could probably do a reverse activity bus where we'd have, similar to a neutral site, or it might be a pickup at one elementary school, and then drop off again at the end of that activity, the same, similar to what we do with activity buses. It'd just be a reverse of our drop off, it'd also be a pickup.
Yeah, I would be in support of that, and I would want to make sure that the students and their families are aware that that is an option, because I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to participate in this, that chooses to participate. And I just had one other question, Madam Chairman. I understand the requirement for hydration, and that the students need to bring a water bottle, but I would suggest that we reach out to support groups, whether they be athletic support groups, or the P T Os or P T As, to see if they would be willing to sponsor providing water bottles, or at least an initial water bottle, to every. serious heart conditions, immunocompromised or take immunosuppressant medication, severely obese, diabetes, chronic kidney disease or dialysis, or those over 65 years." Clearly 65 years doesn't refer to our students. But can we, can you include that in the consent form so that it is in writing to people that they need to be aware that, that if their children have moderate asthma, if their children are diabetic, they should not be participating?
Yeah, we also are requiring, if you look at our Phase Guidance, we're requiring athletic physicals for all students to participate in the conditioning. And on their physical forms, they do identify conditions and the doctors would identify whether they can participate or not.
Okay, so, so do we usually not allow children with diabetes to participate in sports?
No, we allow them. They just, we're just made aware of it so we can maintain their health plan.
Okay, so I'm just saying, given that this is a different situation, I just want to make sure that, 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 I mean, I don't know if you have a completely different physical form or if it's the same.
It's the same Virginia High School uniform that we utilize.
I think that would be in violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act, wouldn't it? To simply say be aware?
I think it may be a better, a different approach would be to consult your physician, something to that effect, but not, I mean, I could tell, I mean, not that I really want to get too personal, but I have a family member who's asthmatic and she was also an athlete and she has it controlled. And I, and if she was in a high school, she would play. And, but we would probably consult with her doctor. But I surely would want the school to tell her she can't play because she's asthmatic.
Right, especially the students that are, that operate under a 504. We would clearly be in violation of 504. I wasn't suggesting that they, that, that we would, but I'm, what I'm saying is I want to make sure that, the assumption that doctors will always tell you during a physical about the risks of COVID, that may or may not happen. And so I just want to make sure that we don't have students who are coming in to play and that they don't understand that there may be a greater risk. So I don't know if the physical form says, be sure to talk to your doctor about COVID risks or something. I just don't want that to fall through the cracks. So that was just another sort of thing that I was concerned about.
And piggybacking on that, in looking at your participation consent form, it doesn't say to have a physical. So maybe adding that in there and then referencing maybe some of the concerns that Dr. Chase has might, because it doesn't say it in here, obviously you're saying it needs to be there, but as part of the consent, letting parents know your child must have a physical. Please be advised that, you know, during COVID, you might want to pay or make sure that your doctor is aware that your child is participating in a physical activity at their high school during this pandemic or COVID or whatever you want to call it, to make sure they have approval.
Absolutely, we can add verbiage.
And then in the VHSL guidelines, you had like everything they had except the part that said, "Students must be encouraged to shower and wash their workout clothing immediately upon returning home." So you might want to add that as another thing that, that is recommended by, by VHSL. And then the other thing that I read there that I wasn't sure I saw in the plan, "Due to the possibility of recurrent outbreaks in the coming months, schools must be prepared for periodic school closures and the possibility of some teams having to isolate for two or more weeks while in season. Development of policies is recommended regarding practice and/or competition during temporary school closures, the cancellation of contests during the regular season, and parameters for the cancellation or premature ending to postseason events and competitions." So have we developed these policies?
Ma'am, what we presented tonight was the out-of-season practice for Phase Two and Three.
Okay.
If approved and we can move into contests and that's approved for December, we'll have the return to action process also.
Okay. All right. Anyone on this side? Ms. Healy, you want to start us?
Dr. Nichols, I've asked in the past when we've had this discussion, are we going to provide any transportation for students? In the past, we've had activity buses to take them home, but that's when they were already at school. I mean, I assume that based on this, there's a plan for a lot of students to be either driving themselves or driven by their parents. But we have a significant population that is not going to be in that category. Have we considered or are we in a position to offer activity buses to transport students to and from this, this conditioning?
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Suddath regarding the transportation. Based on need, traditionally, we've not had issues with kids getting to the out-of-season workouts, talking with our athletic directors and our principals. Not to say that's not different now, but in talking with Mr. Suddath, he did say that we could implement based on need and reaching out, finding if we have a need. He said we could probably do a reverse activity bus where we'd have similar to a neutral site or might be a pickup at one elementary school and then drop off again at the end of that activity, the same, similar to what we do with activity buses. It'd just be a reverse of our drop off. It'd also be a pickup.
Yeah, I would be in support of that and I would want to make sure that the students and their families are aware that that is an option. Because I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to, to participate in this, that chooses to participate. And I just had one other question, Madam Chairman. I understand the requirement for hydration and that the students need to bring a water bottle. But I would suggest that we reach out to support groups, whether they be athletic support groups or the PTOs or PTAs, to see if they would be willing to sponsor providing water bottles or at least an initial water bottle to every student that chooses to participate. Because there might be some that don't have it. And then the requirement that if they don't have a water bottle when they come, they can't participate. I know we want to teach these students to be responsible, but they are teenagers and they may forget them. And, you know, if, if your parents are sitting in the car, you know, most parents are, speaking for me, I'd probably go out and buy some water, but that's not always going to be a possibility. So I would like to try to, to, to have some mitigation for that. I mean, we don't want to encourage kids to come regularly with no water because we'll supply it. But then again, if someone forgets or they don't have it, I don't want to say you can't, you can't do anything today, particularly if they've taken the activity bus and they're going to be sitting there for up to two hours waiting, you know, to, to take it home. So it's just something, I mean, I'd be willing to, you know, help contribute or to ask people to, you know, supply cases of water. I know we can't have, you know, what we had in the past, but it just, well, hey, in my free time, right? Yeah, call me if you need some help. I can, I can buy water. So, thank you.
All right. Dr. Warner, do you have any? Since I'm just going back and forth, be easy.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. I know you've worked really hard on this. I guess my concern is, so we're currently in Phase Two based on the governor's status, what the governors set the state at, correct?
Phase Three, ma'am.
We're in Phase Three. So we're, I guess my concern is, are we going to be monitoring local metrics? And if they don't comport with, even though the state may be at a certain phase, are we prepared to cease these outside, these athletic training activities and conditioning activities if the metrics do not match?
I would say that we'll be following the same metrics that Dr. Kizner and Mrs. Colette will be following.
We will be following the same metrics the school uses.
If they determine that we need to shut down or, or stop, just as we would school or classes, we'd have to do that. And Ms. O'Kan has also been a part of our planning team on this process.
Well, I guess my concern is, is that we're currently at relatively high risk, given that we're 81 out of 100,000 new cases. And our, we're at moderate risk as the percent PCR positive is 6.8. So we're not really at optimum, in an optimum position to be doing this. So my concern is, is that, that your timeline may be moving a little bit too quickly. I do see that they are supposed to have a VHSL physical prior to the athletic participation and it must list all underlying, or all underlying existing health conditions must be noted on the current physical form. So what are your protocols for if there's a problem within a certain athletic group?
Define problem. Somebody's.
Let's say that you get a COVID-positive kid or coach. What are your protocols for that group?
Right, we're going to follow the same protocols that we use with school. We're going to make our contacts. We're going to trace. And definitely we'll have to stop that if it's a pandemic in that specific group or activity. I'm not sure we can mandate a, I'll defer that to Colette.
I was going to save this comment to the elementary, but I need to say it because I didn't say it earlier. We meet with the Health Department. I directly asked them Friday, can we have our children back in school? And they said yes. So I just want to make sure that's in the record because I'm not going to play medical doctor and I'm not going to interpret this. I think what you saw with the numbers, they go up and down. I specifically asked that question based on the metrics that we all had in front of us. So I, you know, I just want to make, I just need to say it because I didn't say it before and it needs to be in the record because I asked them, Dr. Chase was there.
And that's not what I heard.
Well, that's actually what they said.
So what, what I heard them say is, that's a tough decision and we think kids can be back in school, but we're here to help you make the decision. And they were not, they did not seem willing to give us a yes or no answer.
Well, again, I, I don't really feel like I want to debate you, but I heard that the CDC number, if we're just going to stay with that number, then as a school board, you may not want to, you might as well just tell the public today, we're not opening up school, okay? And they were, in the CDC report, there was three parts, as I shared with you tonight. The third part was what they said. They believe we are prepared because we follow the mitigation strategies that are there. So again, I, I'm here, I'm here to give information, okay? And I know people don't want to compare to other school communities, so I won't do that. I'll just stick with Stafford. But I believed I asked that question and I believe they said, based on your strategy, you could have kids back in school.
Dr. Warner, Ms. Randolph?
I would just also like to remind that we're not intending to start this until about the same time that we're allowing the elementary kids in. And also, I, I would also like to point out something you had in Phase Three, and I'm just questioning going into like the sport, the actual sports season. In Phase Three of the part that you described, I know we're not entering that first. In Phase Three, you have on there no travel. But won't we be in Phase Three when the sports season starts? And then won't we need to travel?
Technically, that would be return to learn, or, excuse me, return to activity phase.
Oh, separate, not a three then?
The phases presented to you were for the out-of-season practice for Phase Two and Phase Three, which Phase Three would follow throughout the remainder of the seasons.
Okay.
A season that would start, winter season, which starts December 7th, we would follow the VHSL return to activity process where they are allowed to compete at that time.
Okay. And so the, is there an option? One of the things that you had on there was, coaches put their plan to the athletic directors. And I'd like you to go one step further in having those plans going to Mr. Justice as well, just for the sake of typically, I mean, just in the conversations that we have, sometimes people like skip the steps of first talk to coach, then to the AD, then so on. They just go boom, straight up to the top. So I'd like for him to make sure that he has the information to either answer the family concern or parent concern because it's always going to be, you know, I need to know and upset. And, you know, it would just be nice if he had the plans with him as well.
Sure.
All right. Ms. Hollerbeck, Ms. Young deferred.
I will get there. Well, I, I made the motion to, to move this, so clearly I'm going to support it. We're working real hard to get our, you know, ESL kids into the school and our special education kids into school. And, and there's another side of, of our student body that needs to be doing something other than sitting in front of a computer. The, the athletic fields are an extension of our classrooms. We've, we've said that, I've said that, and our, this whole board has said this for as long as I've been sitting on here. So, so it's not just that, you know, a bunch of, you know, kids want to get together and just throw a ball back and forth with each other. It's part of the learning experience and that is why I am going to definitely support this.
All right. Ms. Young?
Thank you so much, Mr. Nichols. I know you've worked very, very hard on this and passionate. It, it looks in the work that you've done. And thank you so much for answering the questions that I've asked already and that you shared with the board. I'm a little bit confused in terms of the number of students. And I talked to one of my school board colleagues here. And so I'm confused if this is athletic students or all students because the number that you gave me was 250.
When we reached out to our Athletic and Activities Assistant Principals to ask them for their estimates based on their conversations with their coaches and sponsors on who would be participating, the numbers we received back were anywhere from 150 to 250 students at that time.
And if you don't mind speaking up, I don't bite. I can't hear you very well.
The athletic directors and activities directors reached out to their coaches and sponsors to get the anticipated numbers for teams that would be participating in the conditioning if we start October 23rd. And based on those requests, we received anywhere from 150 students to 250 students. Now, again, what they're seeing mostly is a lot of teams that would be participating in the winter season. Some teams that would be in the fall are already involved in fall baseball or travel volleyball. And those coaches were reporting they most likely would not have any out of season. Again, these are optional voluntary conditioning. As far as the JROTC units, they thought they would get back out so they can start doing some of their PT and start working on some of their competition drill teams. And then we also had marching bands. Some schools did not see the need to start as early with marching band and most likely would wait until closer in the winter months before the fall season when they would be out marching with their, at a football game or things of that nature.
Okay.
So that's why the numbers were low.
Okay, thank you so much. And some of these kids are actually, you know my kids, they're all in sports. And so some of these kids are or were on traveler teams. And so I'm wondering if there's any COVID testing. I think this question was raised and you said, that's a no?
No, ma'am, we're not conducting a COVID test.
Okay, so for those that are asymptomatic and they did strenuous exercise, they could take their masks off. And we know now that's in the air, right? Because we're not, we're trying to figure out who we need to be listening to, VDH or CDC. And I made a comment a couple of months ago about CDC not being CDC and I got an email. So please send me an email again. But it is what it is, right? So I'm trying to figure this out. Hours without fever, reducing medications and improved, I think Dr. Chase read that, symptoms and 10 days after onset and symptoms prior to returning. 10 days, not 14? 10 days, not 14? Okay, okay, yeah, there you are. Okay, so where's this metric from? CDC or VDH or is it both have 10 days?
Back in July, the CDC recommended, I'm sorry, back in July, the CDC recommended that we no longer use a testing-based strategy for return to work or school or anything because the coronavirus can be present in swabs up to 12 weeks after the illness has subsided. So we are basing our return to work, to school, to play on the symptoms-based strategy in which it is 10 days from onset of symptoms or 10 days from this, the positive test, as well as 24 hours fever-free and a reduction in symptoms. So they have to meet all three of those criteria to return.
Mm-hmm. So, so back in July, the positivity rate was 5.53. You know what it is today?
I believe it's 6.8.
7.43. We're going in the wrong direction here.
Back in July, there was also not as much testing readily available.
Correct. So I'm unclear, VDH is using the 14-day average positivity rate or the 14-day trend, but it looks like they're using 7-day average from what? I'm dangerous right now because I took a statistics class last year in my doctoral. So, right, Elizabeth? So, you know, I said, well, let me exercise this. And so the test percent positivity rate at 7-day in July was 5.97 for the CDC. And then now it's 7, 7.40. So all I'm saying is like, you're, are you, you're one person. Are you going to be looking at all of this across the whole Stafford County schools?
I have the nurses helping me do this. I'm not doing it alone.
Right.
Believe me. And then the athletic directors are also monitoring this children for symptoms as well and they're checking temperatures as they arrive. And then we're also expecting, you know, we're not going to necessarily get a note from a doctor returning them, but we are going to be monitoring when to tell them to come back if they've been positive. So in part of our contact tracing, if the student is found to be positive, we're going to be discussing with the family the date that they had the onset of symptoms and also, or the date that they tested positive and telling them what day, plus the other criteria, the improvement of, of symptoms, no fever for at least 24 hours without medication, as well as it being at least 10 days from onset before they can return. So it has to be that threefold criteria before they can return to school or work or to play.
So a case incident is like 127.1. So are we keeping a benchmark, like in terms of positivity case rate across the board for the whole Stafford County? Or are we doing it by school or by sport? How, how is that going to be recorded?
We're looking at the, we're looking at the positivity rate for the metric for the area. But then we look at each individual program, class or whatever, based on what is going on with that particular program to determine whether we continue. So if it's a sport and there's a child that's positive, we're going to contact trace that child to see who was a direct contact, which would mean six feet of or less distance for 15 minutes or more contact to determine who was within that spacing and timeframe to have them quarantine because of being a direct contact. So in the older children, we're going to be able to just look at their direct contacts and withhold them from school. This was based on a conversation and training that we had with the Health Department, contact tracers and the lead nurses a week ago Monday. So we're going to be looking more closely at actual direct contacts for exclusion and for stopping a program. Obviously, our children in our lower grades, especially kindergarten, preschool, first grade, we're going to probably need to exclude an entire class based on the activity level in that classroom. In other words, because those children don't really do well with seat time and, and maintaining social distancing, the likelihood of them having that 15-minute contact is higher. So we would probably keep that classroom home. But in a high school, we're going to be able to have children sit for longer periods of time in that six-foot social distancing and be able to monitor their activity better and be able to just determine who they had that 15-minute contact with.
Is this before or after we, we just found out that it's airborne and it's not just?
This is based on contact tracing for a number of other respiratory illnesses like tuberculosis as well. So this is standard contact tracing.
Got it. Tom, I have a couple of other, you could stay right there if you want. So in the plan, it says the reacclimation to athletics and activities. I guess what athletics and activities are you referring to? You already mentioned that. So thank you for that. And you said about the temp checks. In one of the columns, and my eyes are getting tired here, each sport appears to mean you have to be playing a sport and it's not including everyone. So we talked about that already and we talked about that up to 250. Okay, I think all my questions are answered.
Okay, I have just a couple of comments. With regard to what you all have handed us with the Phase Two, Phase Three, if we could, if this is what's going to be posted, instead of saying any student athlete must obtain, I would like that to say every, because I believe that's correct. Is that correct, Dr. Nichols? It's every, that, and that has to be provided prior to participation in the activity? Is that correct? I'm not sure how the, when, when does that form have to be completed and returned?
The physical form needs to be completed prior to any type of practice.
Okay. And so that would be, I think it should say every. So it's very, very clear to, that anybody participating in these. I do note that it does say about the temperature checks will be taken prior to students exiting the vehicle. We are confident, we will not run an activity unless we have sufficient staffing to accomplish that. Would that be correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess the other, I am, I am supportive of this, but I do have some concern, not because of you or the athletic directors or Mr. Justice. I just listened to Colette give us how, how we go back. This board member has particularly kept saying, we don't even have the metrics really to know. I would want to feel a little more confident as you, if, if there is a transfer into the Phase Three, which moves from 50 Phase 3, which moves from 50 persons to 250 students and moving from outdoors into indoors. For me, I would want to have some update, and I don't know if the board would like to, on the 13th or something of October or 27th, because I just feel like if this is approved tonight, I really need to have an understanding of what metrics in general. And I understand I am not the medical expert. I really wish I didn't have to know as much now as I do about these rates. I just feel like if we are beginning to broadly look at our division and opening it up, that I know I would want to at least have some idea of how it's going before moving to what I would consider an indoor and, let's see, five times more students. That does not mean I'm not willing to move there, but for me, I would need, I would like to hear that before we would move there. That's just a broad comment for the board to consider.
I would agree. I, I just, I feel like this, it's a big step that we're doing this in the high school arena, and I feel there should be board inclusion and not just, again, APs and Mr. Justice, not again, because we don't trust, but it's just, it's, we're going to get hammered with the letters, or did you see this headlines and stuff like that? So I kind of feel like we need to be a voice that answers to that.
All right. Any further comments or?
Yeah, for, for me, as, as it currently is, I can't support it. But if, if we were having it brought back before we were having students go indoors, but I have a hard time saying that students can be in our buildings for athletics, but they can't be in our buildings for school. And I just think that's a tough, a tough thing to be saying. I, I absolutely appreciate people who've reached out to me and, and talked to me about the very low rate of transmission outdoors, and I agree with that. So, I mean, I can, I can probably support the outdoor activities. I have a little bit of trouble just saying, yeah, we're going to then move indoors without, without, you know, and I, I think about the metrics and stuff, but as far as I know, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have the data dashboard up on the website yet. I would like parents to actually be able to look at that and have a sense of that if they're sending their kids to our buildings or sending our kids to do sports.
Dr. Warner?
I can, I personally can support the idea of the student athletes being outside for training and conditioning. Where I start to falter is that the bringing them inside, especially since we don't really have any clear metrics on how we're going to monitor the status of COVID in these schools. And, you know, we, you seem to have, you know, there's a calendar here, and we're going to do it this by this date, and we're going to do this by this date. But there's no criteria for assuring that that's clear and that it's safe. So I certainly want our kids to get back to conditioning. But again, I have to agree with Dr. Chase. I have a hard time bringing kids into the school when, for, for athletics when we can't bring them into the school for academics.
Ms. Young?
I'm sure you know where I'm leaning. I would love the kids to be back in the school, but I can't see not bringing the kiddos back for education and have the kids outside. I don't know if Board of Supervisors opened up the parks and recreations locations already. But if it's just for all students to be able to work out, no matter what, because that was the discussion we've had, and I didn't think that that's what it was. I knew that this is what it was for training and then move into their, their group sports. And I would not be able with good conscience to support this and not education for the kids.
Anyone, Ms. Healy?
Ma'am Chairman, I agree about the not having students in school. However, I think it's something that we should consider looking at. I mean, we made this decision last summer, you know, the situation in my view was dire with the, you know, the reopenings and the case numbers going up. We had vacations coming up. And I, and I respect what my colleagues are saying, but, you know, I am not adverse to considering moving the middle and high school students back into school prior to the end of the first semester. I mean, that, that date was set for convenience. It was the end of a semester. There was not going to be an expectation that it was going to happen in October, November. But if in fact it is safe and we find that it works with the elementary, I have, I have no objection. In fact, I would like to revisit that date. So if, if the objection to not having students come into the school for conditioning is because they're not coming in for education, my response is that perhaps we need to look at bringing them in for education. Because one of the, the issues that, that I recall that was of great concern was being able to maintain that social distancing. And, you know, with, with the number of students in, in the hallways and the classrooms and the parking lots and, and, you know, other situations, which I don't think is going to be an issue with the athletes. I think that our coaches take this very seriously. They respect the students and their families, and they're going to do everything they can to make sure that the conditions, you know, are safe. So I, I don't see a significant difference from inside to outside, other than, of course, statistically, I'm sure outside is better.
How about the ventilation on the inside?
Excuse me, may I finish? I, I didn't hear you, Ms. Young, but I'll ask you to repeat that when I finish. You know, I, I think it's something that we should consider looking at. You know, not just, well, we're not going to bring them in for education, so we shouldn't bring them in for conditioning. So perhaps we should be looking at bringing them in for education before the end of the first semester.
She's talking about me.
I'm, I'm done now. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Young.
I'm just saying, I just wanted to respond to your comment. I'm not saying just because they can come in for education, they can come in for athletics. Education is a different story, and the ventilation in the school system is not prepared to handle students in the school. If the schools are old, Hartwood, Drew, Falmouth, North Stafford, these are old school. Is the ventilation fixed? That's questions that I have about inside. Outside's a different story. But I'm not going to, you know, support a plan that has Phase 1, 2, and 3 all together where you can move from outside to inside, because inside is not ready for not education or training, unless my questions are answered about the ventilation. Thank you.
So perhaps maybe, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but perhaps maybe we need to divide this to where the agreement pieces are and then check to see where the disagreement pieces are. Maybe go forward with a Phase 2 vote, possibly then a Phase 3 vote. One other piece that I'd like to ask Mr. Nichols is that, you know, in typical fashion, Mother Nature, Stafford County, they collide quite often. So I'm not sure what would be our plan for inclement weather? Should, I mean, sometimes we know about it, rainy day, cancel everything, but then other times it just comes up on top of us. Where would those kids go? We get a tornado warning, we get a thunderstorm that was only supposed to be rain. What do, what do we do with those kids? I mean, my inclination is obviously we want them safe inside, but if inside isn't an option, what are, what are our thoughts or plans with that?
Would you like a response?
We would follow our current tornado hurricane crisis evacuation drills if we have students at football games or, or out for PE. We would have to keep our kids safe for that threat at that time, so we'd have to follow those safety procedures.
Ms. Chairman, Madam Chairman, is that what you say, madam? I, I don't really want to get involved because I know there's a lot of passion, but I just want to remind you, we have kids in our schools. Every day, we have hundreds of kids in our buildings at the high school level. We have our, in many ways, I would say our most vulnerable children. And if we're looking for metrics, I already presented to you how many kids, which is not many, one is too many. Let me make sure I say that. But if you want to look at the percentage of kids that have been in our schools for three weeks and positive cases, I think you get one narrative. I also just want to say this, and this holds true for me, too. We all could cherry pick the numbers we want to use, okay? If you want to use July, I could go back here from the presentation that I presented tonight and show that we went down significantly just from a few weeks ago. So I just think that we have to be passionate in our discussion, but not choose numbers that are going to help support your position. That's just my suggestion to the board. I understand no one is wrong on this, no one is necessarily right on this. It's, it's your belief system, but the, what, what, I think Ms. Hazard said this a few months ago, it seems like a few months ago, just been a few weeks ago. We're being asked to be doctors, scientists, okay? And, and what the data which I showed you tonight is remarkably inconsistent, okay? And, but you should also remember, we spent a long time in June, May, and early July talking about health mitigation strategies. And I don't want us to lose sight of that. We're not, masks, six feet, social distancing, washing hands, you get it. Colette and her team, we are more cautious than any school system I could think of on reporting suspected and obviously when we're required. So I, I just need to bring that up, is that we do have children in our schools, and we are going to follow. Nothing has changed in the health mitigation strategies that you guys approved throughout the month of July and finally, and your final adoption on July 28th. Thank you.
If I could make a suggestion, which is where I was, my suggestion would be that if, if the motion maker and seconder would be open to it, that for approval of this, however, I would like to have something, excuse me, come back to the board October 13th or the 27th. Those are our two board meetings. So just a report before anything would automatically move to Phase 3. Part of that is not just, please know, it is not a trust issue. We are also trying to also gain and serve the trust of our parents and students. And if they have done very well, we need to say it. And if we have some challenges, that will help us going forward. Any of these programs, as we move and phase into things, I am very much a fan of that, if everybody doesn't know that, because we learn each time. I have to say again, please know it is not trust, but I believe that the board and the public needs to be aware of how it went over those. I could pick the 13th, but that's a couple of days earlier than when you all were going to meet on the 23rd, then the 27th falls after it. So I, I don't know which date to pick. I don't know if there is, if, if there's some thought on that, but I know I would feel more comfortable at least knowing if they were moving, because as I've said, we've gone from 50 outside to 250 inside. I just would want to have a little more understanding. But I think that it is possible. I just would like to see how we're doing, if that makes any sense.
250 is not actually all inside. You're still maintaining Phase 3 outside also. That would be sports like a basketball team, and we still would try to keep them within pods, too.
Can I, can I amend the motion to say that we're going to, I'm going to make the motion to approve the first portion of this? And then let's, let's get off this hamster wheel. I, I'm getting tired. Then we can bring it back, and you guys tell Dr. Kizner when you're ready to present to us again, and then we can vote on it again. And we just, we confer with Colette, and we, we look at the metrics, and we make a decision then on the second half of the plan. So, but let's get off this hamster wheel. That's, that's my motion.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the Phase 2 implementation with a report coming back prior to any movement to Phase 3?
Correct.
Would that be a somewhat of a good state?
There you go.
Second.
All right.
Madam Chairman, I, I just wanted to note for the record, as the original seconder of the motion, I'm, I'm not going to support that motion because I think we have a plan that has been in the works for a long time. I think it's a plan that's in response to the needs of our students and their families. We've been talking about the, the, the mental health, the needs of meeting the needs of the students, and I think this goes a long way. And I appreciate Dr. Nichols, Mr. Justice, and all the ADs and the work that has gone into this. And I think there has to be an element here of, of trust. And I think the superintendent has really gone well beyond what one would normally expect in a leader in a division in ensuring the health and safety of the staff and the students. And balancing that with meeting the needs of the students, their families and the community. And, and I think to break this up is, is, is just a slap in the face to, to the people that have done all the work on this project. And I would expect that if a problem arose here, that it would be this crew that's bringing it to us now, that would be back here and saying, we've got to stop this. We have a problem. Because of the great desire to, to look out for the safety and health of everyone. So I'm, you know, I, I want this to go through. I want our families to know, the students, everyone that has been crying for something like this, to know that there is a plan. And for us to say, you come back here two weeks after you get started, you come back and then we'll, we'll make another evaluation. You know, what does that say? We don't trust you. You know, we, we, we will listen to what you say, but we think we know more. And, and I, I know you all think, I think I know a lot, but I, I don't know this, and I'm on Mr. Justice's Student Health and whatever the acronym is, Welfare Committee. And I've learned a lot on there, but, but this is not an area of expertise for me. And I think there are some, some areas that, that we need to defer. And I, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, I'm, I'm just not going to support the, the change in the motion. I, I just, I think we, we spent almost an hour discussing this. And, and as, and I wouldn't expect us all to agree. If we all agreed, it'd be a little scary, because, you know, there might be something that we're missing. But I, I just, I, I'm disappointed that, that we are, you know, we're trying, we're, what are we doing? Trying to get a consensus among us? I mean, we're here for a reason. We're here to represent our constituents and our community. And, you know, we can certainly pour our personal knowledges and beliefs into it, but ultimately, you know, it's, it's what four people think. I mean, I've been on the, the winning side, I've been on the losing side, and whatever it is. But, but this, I mean, this is worse to me than splitting the baby. Because we're saying, go do it. Do it for two weeks and then come back. And we'll make that decision again. So when I vote against this, it's not going to be because I don't support it, it's because I don't support breaking this up and, and doing only a very small portion of it right now.
I believe the clarification is before it moves to Phase 3. I do not believe it ends Phase 2, just for the record. Ms. Young, did you have a comment?
What, what is this motion then? I mean, exactly what is this motion? I thought we were going to go forward with the first part. If I misunderstood, then I apologize. But if, if someone, if, Ms. Egan, if you could state that motion, I, I know it's getting late, and, you know, I, I understood it to approve the first part and, and hold off on the rest of it until we get a report.
And it's not holding off on the second part. It's, it's having these guys come back to us and tell us how everything is going, and then we address it. If, if it's not going well, then we're not going to approve it. If it's going well, then we approve it to, to move on to the third phase. I mean, it's just taking baby steps instead of just throwing the whole enchilada out there. It's, it's, you know, giving some reassurance to the, to the rest of the board. And it's not, like you said, it's not that I don't trust these guys, I do. But for those who might be, you know, hesitant, like how are we keeping an eye on things? And school board, what are you doing? This gives us a little bit of latitude to, to tell everybody, look, you guys can hear it for yourselves when we come back in two, three weeks, how things are going. And it'll make people feel better, and make us feel better, and make these coaches feel better. It's just kind of an update on what's going on. I mean, again, I just want to get off this hamster wheel and get started. I want, I want these kids out on the field exercising, because it's not happening right now. They're all playing, sitting there playing video games.
All right, Ms. Young.
Sure, thank you so much. I, I am definitely not playing medical doctor, and I definitely do trust, but I am also representing the community. New York is at 1%, and they just opened school yesterday. And they just opened school yesterday. I'm sure they had kids in the school already. But I looked at Harvard and Yale Best Practices. I compared, and I'm not picking and choosing numbers, I compared VDH and CDC from July to yesterday. And so like I said before, I stand by my word. The numbers are going in the wrong direction, and right now I cannot support Phase One, Two, or Three.
Is everybody ready to vote on the, was it a substitute?
Madam Chairman, I think we need a whole new motion since it's a seconder, I did not approve it, so.
I know. I'm sorry, I didn't know who was the seconder.
Let's get this procedure straight and do it right.
Okay, so I'm.
Why don't, would, Ms. Egan, would you withdraw any current motions on the table first? Let's do that first and start from scratch.
Sure. I will withdraw my substitute motion, and I will revert back to my original motion to approve what was presented by staff.
Which I seconded to begin with, and I will second now.
Well, I see, so everybody needs to go ahead and vote their conscience on whether we will not be bringing this back. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
I haven't gotten to the noes yet. I was gonna say, I'll say aye. Those opposed?
No.
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 All right, Ms. Hall, will you please pull the board?
Dr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Ms. Hollerback?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
No.
And Ms. Young?
No.
Measure motion passes four to three.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our next item. We will now be looking at the CIP and the three R list. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the CIP.
Thank you.
And the three R list.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, I am going to have some discussion.
Madam Chairman, I would just like to thank Dr. Warner and Ms. Egan for their work on this. This is my first rodeo on the Finance and Budget Committee. And, yeah, I've managed to avoid the Finance and Budget Committee every year for 20 years, and finally, I got, I got, I got put on it. But anyway, I think they did an amazing job of trying to balance the, you know, the needs and the resources. And, you know, I think we all know nothing's perfect, and this is a living document, so I'm very impressed with the work that was done. I'm not, not including me, I was, I was an observer for most part, but I'm learning.
I will make a couple of comments. I too, thank you for the, thank you for the work. I think the document that we saw earlier is going to, well, certainly is the underpinning for this document. We need seats. I am pleased to see the flexibility that we don't say exactly how we're going to meet the middle school, but we need to come up with different options. We also, you all know, I do represent the Hartwood District. It is hard for me to see Hartwood being pulled off of there because there are many needs at that school. Drew in the same, in the same way. So I have said long and hard, we need two elementary schools. We need one on the one side of 95 and we need one on the other. I don't see how we will make it in 10 years without that at a minimum. I just don't see it. So I think we still need to have those conversations. I will be, though, supporting this tonight because I believe it is the right going forward. However, as I would say to any of us who have older schools, those three R lists have not been updated based on what we came up with. I know that Hartwood has a new roof and other items, so I would ask, and I will tonight, support the three R list. I would like to amend it in a few places for several older school projects to move them up higher. So I would like to just say to staff, please, at least, I don't know if the board also, for our older schools, please relook at that three R list, saying that perhaps some of the projects we are now pulling off is we're not sure what we're going to do with our older schools. Some of those projects for renovation, repair, all those may need to move into higher sections. So I will say that as a comment. I will not be amending tonight, but I think any of us who have those older schools, we need to be sure that with this potential change, some of those projects may have to move up the list, if that makes some sense, so.
Can I ask a question? And I'm just going to use this as the new person thing. But why is it that the schools, being such a large part of CIP, on the Technical Review Committee only has one person? How come we can't have Lionel and John? Just asking. I'm trying to learn.
It's a great, fair question. It's a question that's asked every year. If John or Chris, well, I'll ask Chris because he's got history. He's got a different answer, then say it, but.
I just feel like the information that, like Lionel put together for us tonight for, that's very county pertinent as well as school pertinent. And then, you know, John, with the knowledge of the three Rs and what's going on in our buildings, our needs and things like that, I just feel like it's a good one-two representation for schools, who take such a large part of the pocket, to not have both of them talk and represent. It's just a question I have.
I didn't want Chris to feel like he wasn't speaking tonight.
I'm sure I'll be back up later. So just a little bit of history. So rewind, two years ago, we actually did have two members on the CIP TRC Committee. Their policy process was amended last year. And actually, we don't officially have a school's member on the TRC. They have two floating members, and they choose to let the schools be one of those floating members. We have been in talks with the county staff over that and are still working on that. And I'll just say, they've had a change of leadership over there, so hoping that that process can be amended going forward.
Mr. Fulmer, if you could share, I probably have it in the thousand documents that I have at my house, of when that change was. I can still see the document in my head of the TRC. If that could be circulated to the board, that would be great. So we can possibly share that with our Board of Supervisors member concerning that going forward. If you could, one time it was like the reiterations of how it changed, whichever version you have.
Correct. Yeah, there's multiple versions, but I can, I can get the original version from a few years ago and then the new amended version.
That would be particularly helpful, so, for board members. All right.
Madam Chairman, I think that would be a good topic for the next three-on-three meeting.
I thought so too.
Because that's ultimately where the decision is going to lie with the Board of Supervisors.
I thought so too. So if that could be shared, that would be great.
Yep, we can add that to the agenda.
And then one question with the Fab. Are you all completely comfortable with the dates of the opening dates that were given to you? Did you feel like they needed to be sooner rather than the dates stated? I'm just curious of your opinion. I will be supporting, because I feel like you've guys done your due diligence, but I'm just curious if those were comfortable for you based on information Lionel has shared and such. Thanks.
I think that we would always prefer to have the schools sooner. It seems to take longer to get them from concept to fruition. But as Chris has pointed out, and Dr. Kizner, it's a living document. I think that this reflects a lot of our upcoming needs, but I agree with you wholeheartedly that we need more representation. The schools and the school budget is such a huge part of their capital projects that it doesn't make sense to me that we don't have better representation on the TRC. So I do agree with that. And I appreciate my colleagues on the Fab and their assistance in getting this done. I think, I think we can, I think it's a good document, and I think, again, all these things are going to be moving targets as data comes in and as our projections become more solid and our student needs become more clear.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then I'm going to ask for a vote on the proposed CIP and our three R infrastructure list. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. When this is sent, I hope we send that excellent report that was also prepared.
I do want to remind that at the Fab meeting, there was a discussion, which I would like us not to lose sight of, the, look at the formula that we're getting for three R projects there was, and staff is working on that. Is there, how are other school systems funded? Is it a percentage? Is there a multiplier each year? Because I think one of the things that we're all discovering is that the list keeps on accumulating and that, you know, it just needs to be revisited as we add more schools and have more children.
I have a quick question for Chris, if you don't mind, sorry. During the Fab meeting, we talked about putting in the document that we were going to send across the street with an asterisk that talked a little bit about, there's a possibility that we would be not really looking at, well, Liza brought it up earlier, not doing a renovation of Drew, but repurposing the building and then building a new Drew that has greater capacity. We were going to put that in there so that when we kind of shift gears in a few months when we start talking about CIP again, that it wouldn't be a big surprise to the Board of Supervisors that we'd already started that discussion.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's in there.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was in there before it goes over.
Yes.
Thank you.
It also mentions in the footnote that if Drew, the capacity projected for Drew assumes that the, that the day school would be relocated, and the alternative is to repurpose Drew and build a new middle school. So thank you for putting in my footnote.
Perfect, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our information items. This was our further discussion regarding the return-to-school plan slash pilot. As we know, earlier this evening, Ms. Neely presented to us at the end of her presentation, I believe it said, "Do you have questions?" So guess what part of the program we have reached? We have reached the program. Dr. Kizner, do you, if you have any others, I was just going to have Ms. Neely come up, but if that was.
No, we want to answer, we want to answer the questions you have, so you'll be in a better position to make a decision.
All right. Who wants to start us off?
Well, Ms. Hollerback, go ahead. I made the motion to do it. I just, I guess I want to start by saying thank you to Carrie for her presentation. I like the plan. I liked Dr. Kizner's initial plan. And then after this other plan came on July 28th, I voted for the pilot plan, and I'm just, I'm confused. I'm going to be honest, I'm confused. I mean, things are changing so rapidly, it almost seems like every week or two. My only issue with this plan is based on my assumption from our July 28th vote was that teachers would be brought back on a voluntary basis. And after the letter went out, it was kind of, everybody was going back and everybody was going on hybrid. It is what it is. Parents are frustrated, teachers are frustrated, we're all frustrated, staff is frustrated. This is a horrible position for all of us to be in, just trying to make the best of it. And if there are certain things that we can do to, is there anything that we can do to accommodate those that are adamant that they want to stay virtual? You know, is there a priority list? Or is there a degree of uncertainty or discomfort that we can look at? Have we, have we talked about that? Are there any CARES funds that we can, that we can use as stipends for some of our teachers who volunteer to go back to the classroom versus the ones that really desire to stay virtual? These are all things that, you know, that might take the sting out of, you know, what it is that we're trying to do here.
Yeah, I'll address that. So just to go back to July 28th, and again, it seems a very long time ago, I recognize. So the conversation about seeking people to volunteer, I recall it, and the minutes reflect it, was about our preschool program, because that was the first one we were bringing back. On the other hand, I, we talked about this yesterday at the principals' meeting, that we want to work with our teachers. We want to have them as partners. Although we have health exempt, we also may have teachers that have another reason that they want to discuss with their principal why they rather remain on the virtual side of the equation than the face-to-face. Soon we got to come up with another term than face-to-face, I'm so tired of that. But then the other part is, again, I don't want to pit teachers against each other. We do have a lot of teachers that are coming back and are working. And again, I know many of you have seen them. So I will just say how I feel. Absolutely want to work with our teachers. We want to understand their needs, make accommodations if we can. But I always will just say, and I said this yesterday in front of all the principals, that we have children that I know are struggling. And I know that adults need to be with these children and their teachers and their paraprofessionals. And yesterday, this may be a bad example, but as I left the meeting at Falmouth, I saw five or six food service people there giving out foods to people. They're working. And I don't want to sound harsh or uncaring, but they were working because children are being fed. And I, and I know there are teachers that generally have concerns, and we want to work with them. Absolutely want to work with them. So I just want to, I'm just a little cautious about the term voluntary, because I'm just concerned that we will have a potential of not having the children that in need of a good teacher, not having that teacher. So, but absolutely, if a teacher raises a concern with a principal, we need to listen to them, and we need to figure out if there's a way we could make the accommodations to put them in a position that they will feel more successful at.
Thank you.
Sorry. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Warner goes first.
First of all, I want to thank Central Office for all the work they've done. Ms. Neely, I appreciate talking to you today. I like the idea of the pilot program for the kindergartners. I'm very excited to get them back in school. I think that the schools that are shown to be prepared to do this will be outstanding. I know that our teachers have been struggling trying to create an entirely new paradigm for teaching, and especially with our younger students. It's been frustrating for both the teachers and for the parents and the families, and we do need to try to start getting them back in school. I think especially our younger students. So I, I'm very impressed with it, and I really do support this plan. Thank you.
Is there a reason why Moncur is in on the pilot program? And the reason I'm asking that is, are they still the highest free and reduced population? It was, I mean, it was well over 50% before.
Carrie, why don't you go over the, how we made the, how the decisions were made?
Yeah, so this decision, we had multiple things going on. One, we wanted to get a sampling across the division. We also wanted kindergarten full teams, if possible, who were competent and beyond just willing to do it, actually wanted, wanted to do this. You know, their full team was invested in it. But the other thing that we have going on is we already have certain things going on in different schools. Moncur is an example. We already have a significant portion of Ls coming into Moncur, so in a way, we have that, we could say it's a somewhat of a pilot experience because they have a greater amount of students already at Moncur. So those, and we have some title schools, we have some non-title schools. And, and we did want to start small. I think that's what I heard clearly from the board, to start with a small pilot so that we can learn from each other and grow, so that when we do implement, we'll, we'll feel like we have a pool of best practices that will work for everyone. And then the idea of kindergarten was, we know that certainly our youngest students are our students who need it the most, and. are our students who need it the most, and, you know, we know we're doing it successfully at Head Start, so we feel like this is the next kind of logical step. But certainly, you're only talking, what, three weeks down the road, if we go with the plan, that we would be bringing back K-5.
And then my other question is, I just want, you know, I want to hear for the record that the earliest that it's practical or doable to bring these students back K to 5 is October 26th, because my preference would be to bring them back, bring them all back, you know, on, on this first day. So, but I, but I understand and appreciate the presentations with the, the difficulties that you're anticipating and, and wanting this to, to go smoothly once it gets implemented. But, but I would, I would like to, you know, be told for the record that that is the earliest we can bring back K-5, because if there's any possibility, even if it's a week earlier, that we could do it, you know, and feel confident that it will be successful, you know, I would, I would like to do that.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly want to do it as soon as possible. We do realize that we have transportation, we have, we now need to reach out to our 3-5 parents and make sure we align that. We have some class changes, teacher changes that we'll need to make. There's scheduling involved, we want to flatten out that synchronous model so that we have a more frequent, whether you're virtual or whether you're face-to-face, you would have those four days of synchronous time with your teacher. So, I really do think we, it's not a luxury of time, it's, it's a, we want to really do it right, because you are correct, it is going to be an undertaking, and we want to make sure that we do it well.
Okay, and I respect that, but I, I just needed to hear that. Now, am I correct in my understanding, this pilot is strictly for kindergarten?
Right, so...
I mean, you just mentioned 3 to 5 needs to come on board, so I want to, I want to be clear, because we've talked about K-2, we've talked about K-3, and this is kindergarten, so we are just talking about kindergarten?
Right, and, and I think it's also, because I, I think it also needs to be known that we're talking only five schools, five kindergarten, all, all the kindergartens, all the parents who chose for that. So, I may, that's what's the beauty of having great colleagues, differ a little bit on starting small, just to be truthful. I was hoping to K-2. I cannot lose sight of the emails and the parents I speak to and the stories I have observed, but I think we learned a lot. And I concluded by listening to my colleagues back there, and of course Carrie, who I think we all have the greatest respect for, that K-2 could not work for multiple reasons. She already went over it, I don't need to go over it again. So, we started, just so you know, Ms. Neely, just to give you a little satisfaction, on that November 10th date, and said, "No, that's too late, let's move it." I talked to Ms. Hazard, said he'll be, I'm sorry calling you out, but if you could move something closer. So, we discussed, and we moved it November 10th to October 26th, and that was a date that we felt we could do it right. So, our, my preference, and I think many of us, our preference was K-2. We initially started off with K-1, just to be truthful with you, getting some feedback from different board members, I already stated it, some felt maybe if we could look at K-3. K-2 made sense to us, because we were bringing back about 50% of the children, if we just divide six grades. So, yes, we're going to start with a pilot of five elementary schools and very quickly work with the families, so they have enough notice, so you get their input if they want to participate, and they could arrange their schedules.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Chase?
Yeah, thank you again. I just wanted to ask, so the other 12 elementary schools, do all of them have students currently going for some program or another?
I can't answer that with 100% confidence. I mean, you know, we all have internet cafes available, and they're, they're kind of changing daily in terms of what's happening there, because Dr. Kizner has given them the, the authority as principals to continue to monitor students who aren't plugging in for whatever reason, and a principal may decide that student needs to be in our internet cafe. So, that's kind of changing. I was just kind of speaking to the Moncur piece, I, I know that. But the other thing that, you know, I did ask for, because I heard that from the board, was, you know, for this pilot, at least, we certainly want teachers who are not only willing, but who are in the want-to category. We want those, those teachers to participate first, but there could be a ton of reasons why it might not be the right fit for you right now. Maybe you're hosting more than your own school for the Ls, or maybe you're, you know, there are just a ton of, Ferry Farm, you know, might be an example of a school that wouldn't be quite ready right now to do that.
I'm asking the question just because I am concerned about a school that has had no children in it yet on October 26th going K through 5. So, I, I just want to, for the record, say that I have very serious concerns about a school that has not piloted anything, going from, that, that they're going to know how to handle that. And, and I mean, perhaps, you know, professional development and visiting other schools and seeing...
But I agree with you, if, I'm sorry, to my New York part here. If the board is comfortable with this, we gave you a proposal with 5. We did talk about, if you give us just 24 hours, and I would just shoot you an email and say, and I'm, I don't need to pick a school, but if there is a school that has no children...
Ferry Farm.
What's that?
Ferry Farm.
Yeah, right.
Just say it.
With the exception of Ferry Farm.
I'm coming in with my pink hard hat. Oh, sorry.
And going back to what Carrie said, we have teachers that are willing, we have a principal that understands, that I might shoot you an email and say, "School XYZ, we're going to include..." If you guys are comfortable with that, because I do think, one reason I really did want it, and we all want it, I don't want to give, act like we were against it, of having it at the 17 schools, because it's one thing learning by collaborating, but it's another by learning by doing and experiencing. So, we're not going to have that advantage, but we will definitely learn something from this. But I think we have enough kids, we have a few, I mean, I don't know what the real number is, but 500, 600 kids in our elementary schools already between all the different programs, and it may even be higher than that. So, I would say I do agree that if there's a school with no one, that we'd look at the... I'm sorry. She's just speaking kindergarten, elementary.
Okay, I just was wondering, that statistic you gave, was it all, all schools or just elementary? The 5 to 600?
No, ask the, what?
Is it all schools or just elementary that has 500 to 600?
Oh, no, no, that's, I'm talking about between EL, special ed, and the internet cafe. I mean, we, we have a lot of kids in there, but I'm not sure they're at all 17 schools. And if there's a school that doesn't have anyone, I would ask Carrie to approach that principal to see, if it's not one of those schools on the list, to see if there's an opportunity to bring their kindergartens back.
Can I?
Yes, please.
So, so that was one of my issues. The other thing I want to just stress for people who might be listening, the, the date, October 26th, is of course going to be dependent on health data, and we certainly are hoping very, very much that the health data is going to be good, but, you know, the virus kind of decides the schedule. If we have a big outbreak, you know, right on the 25th or 23rd, I'm sure that you guys are going to come, are going to make the safe decision. So, absolutely thrilled at the thought of getting kids in October 26th. Would love to get them in yesterday, but I just want, I don't want people to, to think that we promised October 26th without looking at the, the data. And then I just wanted to know when we're going to have that dashboard up on the website, because I do think...
The one I showed tonight?
Yeah.
We'll have it tomorrow.
It'll be up tomorrow, great, because I, I think parents...
Rebecca, tomorrow.
...in, in making their decisions. You know, what I found, what I found at the, the university level is that people do look at those dashboards, and they sometimes decide to keep their kids home, or they decide to stay in their dorm room. They may have picked hybrid, and they may be doing hybrid, but when they see a spike, you know, I mean, when I see 70, 70 staff have been quarantined over the last six weeks, that's a pretty disruptive number of staff to have out. And so, if we're going to be going forward and seeing more of that when we're letting more people into the buildings, it's just good to, it, it's good for people to know that we do have COVID cases in our schools, you know, happening to our staff right now. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Randall?
I don't know if this can happen or not, but can we go back to the sample A student schedule? I don't know if that can happen. But I, I have two parts to this. The morning meeting check-ins, is that for attendance purposes, or what is that morning meeting for on an asynchronous day?
Right, so it is, it's twofold. One, we've been doing morning meetings for several years in most of our schools. It's part of what we have been invested in, in responsive classroom and building our classroom community. So, it is, it is that connecting piece that we know needs to be even stronger now, because we're less connected. So, it is an attempt to connect our students intentionally, and all of our students, because remember, they do it with the students who are in both groups, A and B, will connect in that morning meeting, so that hopefully, if we get to the point where we can bring all students back, then they're all part of that same classroom community.
Okay.
But we also take attendance through morning meeting.
Okay.
It's not the only way we can take attendance.
Okay.
But it is one way we take it.
Okay. And then, when you're talking about the four synchronous days for the elementary, are you saying that student A will be synchronous in the AM Tuesday, Wednesday, and synchronous in the PM Thursday, Friday?
That's correct.
Okay. So, just, okay, so that, I just wanted to be, but the, when you write the asynchronous, is that student B?
No, that would be what student, and we probably do need to get away from the term maybe a little bit, as Dr. Kizner was saying, but that would mean, and we still have times to work out, that's why I didn't put the times in here yet.
Well, that was my next one.
Yeah, yeah. But it's going to be similar to, so essentially, they had five hours, if I was an A student, I had five hours synchronous Tuesday, five hours synchronous Wednesday. So, 10 hours, but that time, and we may morph that a little bit, would be spread out among Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday...
Okay.
...with, you know, asynchronous slash homework, the kinds of work that Dr. Kizner was talking about, where you're creating a mural to show, you know, learning, or you're doing, you know, gathering something from outside to show you're learning, those kinds of things. So, it's not necessarily online, but it's work at home that they would be doing.
Okay, okay. And then, what time are we looking to start kindergarten coming back face-to-face? Like, are we looking to have an 8:00 AM start time, the 7:30? I mean, I know we kind of fluctuated some things while we were doing the virtual only, but now that we're coming in, are we thinking in terms of getting a bus and a start time that will eventually work when we work with the middle and the high school?
So, that was, that was part of the reason that we started with that shift 1 and shift 2. That would remain in place, or one, you know, one set of schools will be the 8 o'clock to 1 o'clock shift, and then one set of schoo... Now, that's going to change a little bit in terms of the end time for the synchronous face-to-face learning, right? Because students will be leaving earlier, done with their synchronous learning, so that the teacher can then move to another group of students for the afternoon to touch base. Again, we have to work out the time on that, and that's where, you know, we really want our principals to be able to go back and have those conversations with teachers, to get their input on what they feel would be both manageable and, and be a healthy balance that we're trying to achieve.
Okay, and do we know, I mean, you were just alluding to conversations with staff and principals and such, but are we set okay staff-wise with enough teachers to do the hybrid as well as enough to do the virtual, like the whole virtual?
We have the staffing, we just have to adjust where students are, you know, depending on the changes, for example, that parents have requested, we may need to ask a teacher who was originally going to do two face-to-face classes, you know, to do one virtual class, or the other way around, depending, and it really is, in talking with principals, it's very grade level specific, you know, the challenges they're having, depending on the feedback they got from parents.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Neely?
So, everybody knows that Pam's plan wanted K through 5, right? But that was when COVID numbers were a little lower than it is right now. So, I have a couple of questions in terms of, I know we have kids in school right now, but when we bring more kids in the school, especially in the older schools, I mentioned that before, what are we doing about ventilation?
So, I don't know if my friend John wants to come up and answer that one?
Yeah, I found a friend.
Yes, for ventilation, we are, we're ventilating earlier in the day and later in the evening, so we're actually running the systems much longer, and we've already started that process. We also have filter upgrades that are funded now, and we're going to be changing the filters more regularly. We also have an assessment from an engineer that is going to help us to assure that all our buildings are operating properly, and the building codes really help us know what is required for ventilation. So, we're meeting that, and that's something that is not caused by the pandemic.
Are you talking about, you say you're meeting that, are you talking about the MIRF-13 filters?
No, I'm talking about building codes and ventilation rates. Our, our buildings need to be functioning properly, and so that's what the assessment is going to help us assure with our operation and maintenance staff and outside engineer. So, we're taking this very seriously. The, the ventilation is not going to stop the spread of the virus, it's just going to help improve the air quality and help basically bring in more fresh air, and so that's what we're focused on with all the schools.
So, you're telling me the schools are safe? Is that what you're saying?
If somebody has the virus right now in this room, then I'm not saying that the ventilation system is going to keep somebody else from getting the virus, but the schools are, are being maintained as designed, and we're assuring that they meet the, the basic requirements of, of what they were designed to do, as far as the ventilation and the air changes and the, the fresh air that, that is brought into the schools.
So, are they properly commissioned right now before the, the most of the kids start coming, or are we still working on that?
I'm not going to say that these are all perfectly commissioned and, and operating perfectly, and that's part of what the assessment is about. It's going to be an ongoing process, so if we identify a problem, then the goal will be to fix it right away, and, and that's, that's, that's basically the, the work that we have going on. And I've asked the question of our operation and maintenance staff and our engineers, do we have issues with schools that are not meeting the requirements that are really part of the code? And the answer is that we don't have, we haven't identified any as of yet. We may identify problems when we're doing the assessments, and we're going to address those as we come, as they, as they happen, and this is certainly a different time for our team and the whole school system to be, you know, dealing with issues and problems with the buildings, because they are going to happen, they happen every year. And so, when we have an issue with a building, we'll have to decide, what do we do? How does that impact on the delivery of, of classes? And obviously, we had where a chiller is broken in, in a high school, and it disrupts the activities in the high school on a normal year, now it's certainly going to disrupt what's happening in the school. So, we, we definitely have a different time ahead of us as we open and we face any problems in the schools. And I don't, I don't have any to report today, but it doesn't mean that's not going to happen. And I don't, I don't have any to report today, but it doesn't mean that's not going to happen.
Okay, I have a list of questions and I'm going to send you via email because I don't want to hold up everybody.
Okay.
Ms. Neely's hiding behind you, I have a couple of questions. So, yeah, I already knew that the little kiddos can't possibly be in front of a computer and figuring out, and we talked about that earlier today, where they're probably disappearing and don't come back to the computer. So I would love for them to start school, but it's about safety, right? It's about safety and the health. And I know about the underserved and I know these individuals are working and, you know, some are at home by themselves, I know some of them. But I just need to have that comfort that the percentage, the COVID rate is going in the right direction. And so COVID has no date. So when we choose October or November, I want to make sure that the 14-day trend that we're looking at, it's actually going in the right direction before, you know, we do this opening pilot or not. But, so I know, I keep saying New York is at 1% and we're not. But help me understand. So what are we going to use to, you know, to use as that metric? Because like, I'm looking at the world health, is that they're saying 5% is recommended? VDH and the RAND, I think VDH, or is it, yeah. So they have RAND as doing the studies for them. And RAND suggested 5% is a good rate, right? We're at, we're at 8. So I'm just asking, like, what are we planning on saying? Are we saying, okay, if in two weeks it's going to be at whatever, whatever, then we're good to go? So parents need to know that. And going back to what Dr. Chase said earlier, at some point, they may say, oh, that's too high for me, I'm staying home versus, you know, so we just need to be transparent as to what the rate is, what the metric is that we're going to use to say that we're going to open or when we decide to say that we're going to close because, for whatever reason, we have an outbreak here or there and that, you know, because we have social distancing and all that kind of stuff that we need to apply. So I just want to see that somewhere. Yeah. Yeah.
Don't need to answer that, I think I already presented all that information?
No, for then, this is the metric that you're going to use in October and November, you're saying? With the rate that we're going right now, the rate is right now with an 8. Are you saying you're good with 8? Is that what you're saying?
October 26th.
Yeah.
I think I've already demonstrated, on July 21st, July 14th, I was telling you hybrid. On July 21st, I was telling you, no, we can't come back, okay? Not yet, the data wasn't good. I have no interest in putting people in harm's way.
So what is the number?
But there is not a number.
Oh, okay.
Because I already showed you that every week the number goes up and down.
Yeah, but I'm saying...
And New York, I just got to tell you, I'm not going to debate what's happening really in New York. But I know a lot what's happening in New York.
I mentioned New York because it's a 1% and we're at 8. All I'm saying is, Dr. Kizner, if we're going to open up, we can't say the number fluctuates today 6 and tomorrow's 8. At some point in time, we need to say, okay, you know what? We're not going to open.
I said, okay, let me just remind people what I said just a couple of weeks ago.
Sure.
I said if the, because I'm still staying with the VDH pandemic dashboard on Stafford. I said if it hit high burden, I would not recommend to this school board or I would take action to stop children and staff in being in our schools. That was what we saw a lot in August, okay? The, again, I don't, Collette's the expert, but I think I know enough about the positivity rate. It doesn't, it indicates a lot about how much testing you are having in your community, okay? I would also say that the state health department, and I'll be honest with you. I don't want to sound political, but yesterday, we all got an email about somebody claiming CDC posted something. Three hours later, I was about to write back to that person, CDC withdrew what they posted. So I'm not going to spend a lot of energy and time in interpreting the CDC because I'll look foolish six hours later. But, but the Virginia Department of Health, I have to depend on that they are local people and we meet with them. And the 10 is when you go to high burden, okay? 5, you are correct, below 5 is low burden.
I mean, they contracted with RAND, that's, I'm just going by what they're saying. VDH says that they contracted with RAND and RAND suggested 5. So I'm just asking the question, that's all.
But I guess what I'm sharing with you, I presented to you.
Yeah.
Multiple times. So I'll be happy to keep asking, answering, but I'm going to give you the same answer, okay? Above 10 is high, below 5 is low, in between is moderate or mid-range. Governor, if we want to, I'm going to use the governor because I saw his wife today. He has set for the state, 10% is the threshold. So I guess going to go back to what I stated, I want to go back to what Mr. Reichert stated. I want to go back to what you guys already approved. We have a lot of health mitigation procedures in place. We're forgetting that, we have this. We have social distancing, we have, we've done, you know, we have a lot of things. It's not like we are just bringing kids back to a building and say, you're on your own, okay?
And I appreciate that, Dr. Kizner. The only thing I was saying, we're bringing more kids in. And so the less social distance we're going to have. And so that's, that's all I'm arguing with, depending on how many we put. But thank you so much for that explanation.
Madam Chairman, I just want to note, this is completely voluntary on the family's part to send their children back, correct?
Right, we're still having...
There is always an option for a parent or guardian to say, I want my children or child to stay in virtual. So there is no mandatory return to school, is that, is that correct?
Correct, we're still having the 100% virtual.
Thank you.
Nope.
All right, I'm going to make some final comment on this. First things I would like to say is thank you to all those who have put in a lot of work on this. One thing I would like to note, one thing that Stafford County Public Schools has decided to do, which they did not have to do and other school districts have not, is allow parents to change their mind. Many school districts said, whatever you said in July or June or whatever it was, is what you're sticking with. I believe that Stafford County Public Schools is going over and above to allow parents, exactly where Ms. Healy was going, who may, as time goes on, make a different decision. However, that flexibility then does result in additional work because it's a change. So I would like to say, I think that Stafford County Public Schools is doing the right thing by parents to allow them more time to evaluate the data. But again, flexibility results in additional work. I wish it didn't happen that way, but it doesn't. But I believe of those two options, I would prefer to give parents the option to change their mind. That may not stay forever, but at least in this immediate time, given what's, you know, July was a whole different animal, to give that option. So I would like to say thank you because I know that is a lot of work. And I know the principals spent a lot of time calling families and that was just, you know, half of our families. So I thank you because I think that was the right decision. And I think some other school districts may regret that decision, but we'll see. The increase in synchronous learning, I really applaud and appreciate because that doesn't just impact the pilot families, it impacts every family. And that is something I think all of us, or at least I know my emails, are a lot about that asynchronous. So I appreciate, again, it's showing, again, we are listening to feedback and we are trying to adjust. Again, adjustment, if I can remember, and I'm rounding, it was like 11,983, if I remember correctly, elementary students. Please remember that. That is a lot of students to make changes for. And we are all trying to look out for each one of them. I do appreciate the pilot program. Most of you know that I think we need to engage our youngest learners, that they have a teacher, that they can see and move forward. I don't want to lose our youngest learners going forward because for them, I think it is the most difficult. For some of them, this is their first experience in school. The way to capture them, I still, I can still see my first kindergarten teacher. That's how much I remember that person. And I'm thinking, I want other students to have that same, that I want them, because we don't know. If we all had the crystal ball, we could be making a million bucks. Dr. Kizner and I have talked about it a million times. If I knew what everything would be in January or December. But there is always looming over us the fact that we may go all back to all virtual. But I believe those students need to have that connection going forward. So I am supportive of this. If I was to say, if for some reason you want to add schools to this that somehow partway through the, I am fine with that because that is getting more students in. What I would suggest, but I know I talked to this with Ms. Neely, we have the best staff possible. Let's though use the learning models and I don't want to burden our students, our teachers. But if we can come up with a way for those who end up being part of this pilot program, what did I learn? How can I teach others? How can I bring you all along? I don't know how you pull that off and I know our teachers do that among themselves. But you've got rock star teachers. Let them help teach each other. We always talk about train the trainer. These are some of the best trainers we're going to have. So we can learn from that so that when we get to the 26th, which is our hopeful date, but it does have an asterisk, it has to be work. I still want us though, as a division, to be working towards that date. And if it has to change, I know Collette will be working with us and others. But I don't want us to lose sight of, let's work towards that date. So am I hearing among the board members a support of what has been brought to us and the ability to add to, if you want to? And it sounds like if you can move updates, I know that's not possible, but we're going to give you the option. And just to keep sort of us informed going forward. Is there anything you need from the board?
Absolutely. I do want to just clarify, we haven't ironed out the schedule exactly. But so for example, now there are 10 hours of synchronous instruction over two days, right? We're going to flatten that so that there's synchronous learning in the morning and in the afternoon. So obviously, it's not going to be five hours in the morning and five hours in the afternoon. We can't do that.
You all figure it out, it sounds like we are addressing...
I just want to make sure that, you know, folks know.
It sounds like we're addressing an issue on asynchronous that came up in almost at least many of my emails.
And even the synchronous was an issue. I mean, for that low level, they was like too long for those shortened days. So I'm so thankful that you heard that, that you've been able to mobilize yourself in a different direction, I think. Huge applause, huge applause.
Work out the details, I think, moving forward. Is that the sentiment of the board? Okay. We have, I believe, two more items, I'm sorry, I got lost on my...
Madam Chairman, can we put the budget priority discussion off to the next meeting? I'm afraid it's, at this late hour, it's not going to be a very productive discussion.
I did see that 11.02 had a date on it, if we wanted it to be, oh, no, it was still October, I'm sorry.
I'm talking about the budget discussion, budget priorities. I think that can wait till the next meeting. Maybe we should put it number one on information.
Dr. Warner, you are the one, head of Fab, are you okay with that? Or do we... I think we heard you.
Yeah, no, I think that we can postpone the budget priorities discussion. I think maybe the Fab should focus on it at our next meeting, I think is the 5th of October. And for now, I think we should just move on with this last item, which is 11.02, and call it a night.
Mr. Fulmer, can you give us a truly Cliff Notes version? I don't know, you may be too young to remember the good old Cliff Notes, but I do.
The policy approval revisions to policy, certainly that's information. I guess if we have any questions, we can send them to the superintendent. No, it's to meet the state requirements, but just wanted to check it off.
Mr. Fulmer, if you could just, I think for any employees watching, at least when we have this in the record of the overview, so Cliff Notes version, Mr. Fulmer.
Yes, ma'am. So we have a health benefits fund, which is a combination of employee and employer paid premiums. As we did a few years ago, we offered a health insurance holiday to employees. That was a six-month holiday. We wanting to revisit that this year at the request of some board members. We discussed it at the Finance and Budget Committee. What the Finance and Budget Committee requested or ultimately suggested was a 75% reduction in the health insurance employee premium. And that would be for the remaining eight months of this fiscal year. So starting November 1st through the June 1st payroll deductions and the attached reductions in those rates, the amended rates are attached to the agenda, so you could see them. That would be funded with the savings that we have in our health benefits fund, which has accumulated over several years. Just want to mention that the Board of Supervisors also has some savings in their health benefits fund. And they've actually suggested for the county, and we're working with the county staff to do this jointly, to actually look at one-time bonuses or stipends to employees as well. So we'll be coming back with some additional information for that. But that did come up at the Fab with, by Mrs. Healy. And so I just wanted to point that out, that I actually think it was maybe the next day at the Board of Supervisors meeting that I was attending that came up. So I've been working with the county staff on that as well.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Fulmer, that's for employees who don't have the health insurance?
That would be for all employees.
Yes, for all employees. So I, thank you for following up on that.
Yes.
Thank you for that, I just wanted to make sure we had that into the record in case anybody's still watching, and I appreciate that. The other items will be deferred. Our next board meeting is on October 13th. Thank you all for everything this evening, and we are adjourned.